We will resume our meeting. We were here at 6:00 and had closed session. So, we are now at the point of additional agenda items. There are none for this evening. Scheduling update for upcoming meetings. Just a reminder that after this evening, we go on recess for the holidays and we will be coming back for our next meeting, Monday, January 7th. And I want to point out that one of the things that we're going to have then is a work session discussion of legislative priorities with our legislative advocate. We're also going to have a briefing on the resident survey questions. And the following Monday, January 14th, we've scheduled a public hearing for the redistricting. And a number of other items, but they're far enough off in the distance that I think that suffices for important things to just note for upcoming meetings. At this point, we will go to the public comment period, and this is the opportunity to speak about anything that is not on our regular meeting agenda. And I'll also note that we're going to hold a public comment on the first work session item on the Ritchie Avenue traffic restrictions. We will take public comment during that work session item. So, if you're here to speak on any of the regular meeting items, which would be the consent agenda items, or on that one work session item, please hold that until we get there. Well, actually, consent agenda items, we're not going to take any. So, the only thing, the only thing you can't talk about at public session now, at public comment, is the Ritchie Avenue traffic item. And other than that, speak away. And anybody who wishes to speak, please identify yourself and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Porter. I live in 1100 block of Elm Avenue. And I wanted to come and talk to you very briefly about your decision on the $1.4 million in tax duplication and other funds. I'm not going to give you a list of where I think you should spend it, but I'm going to talk a little bit about what I think are some guidelines for thinking about how to spend it. I know you all have spent some time talking about this, but I would really like to make sure that this is a community conversation about this issue. First issue is, you really don't have to spend all of it. During my time on the council, I was an advocate, not very successful one, but an advocate for maintaining a stable tax rate, coming up with a rate that was sustainable over the long term and not changing it every year. I think doing that, I know what the arguments against it are. I heard them a number of times. But I think the arguments in favor of it are that it helps people plan. They know, at least in three-year increments, what their tax rate's going to look like. And it also, the other issue is that people are never as happy when you cut the tax rate as they are unhappy when you raise it. So, that's something else for you to think about. If you keep a stable tax rate, there'll be some years where you'll have excess revenues and some years where you'll need to spend into those excess revenues. So, one thing you could do with some of this money is create a reserve fund that would get you toward a more sustainable, more stable tax rate in the future. The second thing that I wanted to point out is that you shouldn't spend a one-time windfall on something that will create an ongoing expense, like new staff or new programs, or cause ongoing revenue reduction, like a permanent tax rate reduction. It's better, a better use is to make a one-time expenditure, especially a one-time investment that will produce benefits over time. And the third thing, and this is maybe my most important point, when thinking about investments, you should consider investments in people and in the community, not just financial investments. As full disclosure, as you know, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of CHEER, and CHEER has a number of thoughts about ways you could spend this money in the community. But I'm not here advocating for that right now. I want to make a bigger point. You might remember that some time ago, CHEER did a study that showed a widening income gap between the mostly white, increasingly upper-middle-income new homeowners coming to Tacoma Park and the racially and income-diverse renters here. I believe that this could be the most serious problem that's facing Tacoma Park in the future. Right now, the problem is not such an issue, because Tacoma Park still has a lot of people in the middle, people like me, who bought our homes years and years ago when homes were more affordable. But you really can't wait to address this for the decade or so that it would take for these problems to become apparent. If you wait, by the time it becomes a problem, it'll be too late to address it. I would strongly encourage you to think about investments in people, people here in the community, as well as investments that will break down barriers between different income groups and different racial and ethnic groups. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Are there other comments for public comment?
Is there maybe one of the Boy Scouts that would like to let us know what they're doing here tonight and what they hope to learn?
Looks like Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts.
The tall Boy Scout.
Yeah, we have shy Boy Scouts. My name's Mike Tidwell. I live 7125 Willow Avenue, and I am a parent volunteer. And I brought a number of Boy Scouts from Troop 33, which, as you guys know, have been meeting continuously every week in Tacoma Park since 1920. Pancake supper's been going continuously, I think, since 1939. So, we have a great tradition, and these boys are studying for their merit badge citizenship in the community. And one of the requirements is to attend a city council meeting, so they're here to listen and listen to the debate. Councilmember Kate Daniels-Cohen was gracious enough to come visit us at my home on Saturday and talk about the city's business and the environmental sustainability action plan that you guys are going to be voting on for our contract tonight, I believe. My councilmember Seth Grimes wanted to come, but he was out of, out of the country, so he graciously put us in touch with councilmember Daniels. So, anyway, we're here to learn and see the democratic process up close, and we appreciate you having us.
And they weren't the only ones who wanted to come. I wanted to too, but I was in California.
Okay. You've got a third choice.
Anybody else? Okay, we will move to council comments. Councilmember Daniels-Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, here it is again, another first of the month. Another time, the Tacoma Park newsletter was delivered to each and every household in the city of Tacoma Park. Don't even consider putting this in the recycle bin. It is chock-full of information, and some of the most information is right on the inside, the most important information is right on the inside of page one. This is going to be show and tell tonight. Right down here in the corner, and this is for, for you Boy Scouts too, there is opportunities to serve on city boards, commissions, and committees. There are lots of openings on committees that actually help us run the city. It's a really, really important part of, of what you can do in this particular city. That's why I make, one of the things that makes it so incredibly special. Let's see. It's where I got my start. I read one time, some few years back, that the recreation committee had an opening, so I volunteered, and I, and behold, out of that commitment came some really innovative programming in our recreation department. And behold, again, the winter recreation guide, another document that should not be discarded until the spring guide comes out. There's so much information in here for, for people of all ages, young ones to old ones, and this year, unless I've missed it before, there are actually classes for dogs. So, I, and I think probably in, in the city of Tacoma Park, we, we almost have one dog per, per family, unless you're a cat person, and, and which I am, so I don't have any dogs. But there, there are definitely classes for people and for dogs. Do not discard this one, chock-full of great classes and opportunities for, for our residents. Let's see, where did, oh, I've got, all right, I got to that part. I'd also like to direct you to page three in your new, in the newsletter. This gives you a moment for some great trash talk. This article is going to take you from the beginning of a recycled piece or some garbage all the way to, through to when it goes into, into wherever it goes and becomes recycled materials. It's called Trash Talk. Don't, don't move past this without reading it. And then, at that point, you all just read it from cover to cover. Many, many, many exciting and interesting things in there. Too much, too good to miss anything. Now, now that I've done show and tell, I'm on to my favorite part of the whole week. It's the gold stars. And this week, I'm giving Seth Grimes a gold star for being out of town this weekend. And
Good job, Seth.
And requesting that a council member meet with Boy Scout Troop 33 and their citizenship, citizenship in the community merit badge participants. And I got the opportunity to, what a special treat. The Scouts and their leader, Mike Tidwell, and you all have met all of them, actually, they're right here in the audience tonight, are very interested in Tacoma Park's environmental action plan and greenhouse gases, which is one of the agenda items tonight. Many of them are here, and I, I thought they were going to comment on the action plan, but as I said, I think, two weeks ago, the only thing that scares people more than death is public speaking, so they're, they're staying back a little bit. I had the opportunity to give them the entire lifespan of this ordinance that we're passing tonight, from when it started in, in 2009, to where it sits and what's going to happen with it tonight. And that was, that was pretty, pretty exciting and fun for me. I had to do a lot of homework. It was, it was a thrill for me to do this, and one wonderful moment of having the opportunity to pay it forward. I'm giving them gold stars too, for speaking about this really important topic relating to the future of environmental sustainability. It probably is as important as any other issue with the federal government and, and with any state, county, or city governments. One more time, I've got more gold stars. Huge gold stars go to Old Tacoma Business Association for many things, but for specifically getting the news out early via email to all of the lift serves about what, about what's happening each week in Tacoma Park. Super job. The really, specific gold star for the week is for the pajamarama. I don't know how many of you all were in the audience were at the pajamarama, but there was great participation with all the stores. There were even people in the farmer's market who didn't go into the stores, who were actually in their pajamas. Now, I don't know if it's because they just felt like going in their pajamas, or they were participating in the pajamarama, but there are lots of adults and children in pajamas on Sunday morning. Let's see, really great walk on the red carpet for everyone who wanted to strut their stuff and win a prize. I had the pleasure of being a judge. My hat is off to Laura Barclay and Patty Baker, who create a really spectacular team for making Tacoma Park a special focal point, both inside the city and bringing new people to our city. Just try to get a place to sit at any of the restaurants, and I owe a great deal of this to the OTBA and their leadership. Really spectacular job. And just final thing, I'm taking this moment to wish everyone the happiest of holiday seasons and a happy, happy new year. I will see you around the hood, and I'll see you right here next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Just a brief comment. First of all, I want to welcome the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts who are here tonight. I know there's a difference between Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, as I was a Cub Scout once, and I never became a Boy Scout. I chickened out. But I enjoyed being a Cub Scout. It was a blast. I wanted to say that I sit on the Council of Governments Climate, Energy, and Environmental Planning Committee, which is popularly known as CIPSE, right? And at last week's meeting, this is an, Council of Governments is a regional organization composed of county, county representatives and representatives from all the municipalities in the Washington metropolitan area, including the District of Columbia, to do coordinated planning. And this particular committee worries about climate and energy policy, which is very interesting. I really enjoy it. But at this meeting, they opened the meeting with a showing of a film called Bag It that was shown here in this auditorium about, I guess, less than a year ago, wasn't it, that we had that show? And this is a documentary that's been done by nobody here in Tacoma Park, but about the use of plastics in our modern-day civilization and how it's contaminating our environment. We saw it here last year. It was a pretty interesting movie, and I was just really, really pleased to see that the Council of Governments was able to show it to all the members of the CIPSE committee. And needless to say, it's, it's about a 45-minute film. It made a pretty impressive impact. So, word is getting around about the dangers of plastics, and it's very, very concerning, very, very deeply concerning about the welfare of the human race, as well as an awful lot of species that fly in the air, live in the oceans, and animals of all sorts who are affected by the plastics in the environment. So, that's the only thing I wanted to comment on tonight, but I just wanted people to know about that. If you ever do get a chance to see this film called Bag It, it's very entertaining, it's quite amusing, but it's also very sobering.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the Cub Scouts for coming out tonight. I'm sorry I wasn't able to take you on the tour of the building, but as the mayor said, we had a meeting that started quite early tonight. Speaking to constituents, as the mayor noted, we don't have any meetings until January, and I'm very happy to take constituent meetings, neighborhood association meetings, field visits to, to areas of issue or opportunity in Ward 2 or anywhere in the city. So, if people want to reach me, my email is probably the best way, which is available on the city council's website at Tacoma Park. The other issue I wanted to mention is that we just got our, our Christmas tree this weekend, and, and I learned about Christmas tree light recycling for the first time. So, my wife and I at our house have set up a large box, and we're collecting old Christmas tree lights to bring to recycling drop-offs. And Mom's Organic Market in Silver, in College Park, excuse me, is doing a drop-off place too, but it's something our city program hasn't, I don't think, caught up to yet. But people are starting to try to recycle lights in particular, because many people are replacing their older lights with LED lights now, more environmentally friendly, as councilmember Schultz indicated. And so, rather than throwing away all those old strings and countless tons of plastic, people are now collecting those lights, recycling them for their copper, for their glass elements, and for other pieces of the lights. So, I live at 7003 Woodland Avenue, and there is a large cardboard box on my front porch, which we'd be happy to see filled up, and so we can drop it off now through the end of January. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, Adventist Community Services runs the public pool at Piney Branch Elementary School, right next door to this building, and my wife and I volunteer there. My wife actually manages the operations of the pool. And this last Friday, they had an unfortunate incident that the pool pump burned out. And so, without the pump, the water doesn't get recycled and cleaned, and so the pool is now closed and will remain closed until that pump has been replaced. We had hoped that the pump would be replaced today, but they're still working on it, so right now, we're guessing that maybe it will reopen Thursday. But I understand that the Public Information Officer with the Police Department will be doing an email blast to let the community know when the pump is installed and the pool reopens. And people can also check the Adventist Community Services website at www.ACSGW.org, O-R-G. That's the bad news. The good news is that when the pool reopens, it'll have a new pump, and so it should last for a long time, and the pool should remain open. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. I also thank the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts for coming out tonight. While for the Boy Scouts, this might be a requirement for getting a merit badge, it's also a great opportunity to start a career of engagement in Tacoma Park civic life. And thanks for councilmember Daniels-Cohen for covering the meeting this last weekend. I have one announcement, and for that, I'll just read the text of the announcement from my neighbor, Denny May, who asks, "Please reserve the date of Friday, January 11, 2013, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for a celebration of Video American's 18-year contribution to the cultural life of Tacoma Park." In case anyone is not aware, Video American is going to be closing. "Help us send off the owners and staff of this unique and venerable local institution with a multimedia celebration for the whole family, with music speakers, food, and other commemorative events. We could not save this wonderful store, but we can celebrate its contribution to our community. If you would like to get involved in the organizing, let me know, and I'll connect you to Denny May or Hank Prentzke." So, again, that'll be Friday evening, January 11, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And if you have looked at the rolling agenda for the council, you'll see that the council will be considering a resolution of appreciation and celebration of Video American at the meeting prior to that date. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens has one other thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot. Any of the people who watch this council sessions each week know that the Tacoma Park's official peace delegate, Pat Lovelace, is here most nights.
Where is he?
Councilmember Daniels-Cohen asked me where he is. Well, he sent his regards. He was disappointed he couldn't attend the meeting tonight, but we had an early session. I usually provide him with a ride here. And interestingly enough, his oxygen wouldn't last long enough to, to be here for a closed session in the lobby and wait for us, and then start and go through the meeting. So, he had to miss the meeting tonight. But he, he did send his holiday regards to everyone, wished them a happy holiday. I know that with the Cub Scouts being here tonight, that he would have been very happy to see them here and, and learning about how the city council works and about civic responsibility of all residents of the city. And I'm sure he would be wishing you a happy holidays and, and praying that you would be safe through the holidays and have a fun time. Thank you.
A quick question for
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes. You probably said where the celebration is.
At Video American.
At the actual facility.
At the store.
Okay, thank you.
Which is on Carroll Avenue
Carroll, yeah.
At the intersection with Laurel.
Thanks.
And I just have a couple of quick items to mention. As I said earlier, I was in California and couldn't visit with the Boy Scouts, and I'm always happy to do that anytime I'm in town, and if there's another opportunity, be happy to come do that, or Cub Scouts as well. I was in California at a meeting of the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Leader Conference that happens every year. I've been involved in that organization for 19 years, and this time, we had an opportunity to hear from people from various countries, from a judge from Kenya, a woman from Bogota, Colombia, a, an elected official from Ireland, somebody from Jamaica. So, it, it has an international flavor to it. Also heard from some of the newly elected, or about to be newly elected but yet to be sworn in, members of Congress, both Senate and the House, and heard from the, the U.S. Ambassador to New Zealand, a very interesting group of people. It got much bigger than it has been in the past. It always used to be about 100 people. This year, it was 650 people. And so, it was a very interesting conference, and I was glad to have a chance to go to California for a couple days. Before I went to California, I went to the Washington County Legislative Dinner for the Maryland Municipal League. Since I'm part of the legislative team for the Maryland Municipal League this year, I'm the chair of the Legislative Committee again. So, I went to a dinner in Big Spring, Maryland, which is halfway between Hancock and Hagerstown, and has 405 people. And it was very interesting to visit Big Spring. On Wednesday night, I'll have the opportunity to go to the Southern Maryland Dinner, which will be in North Beach, so it's a good opportunity to get around the state and see people from different areas of the state. I also have a meeting this, this Wednesday with the Speaker of the House, Mike Bush, and also with Craig Rice, County Councilmember, about transportation funding in the upcoming legislative session. I'll also be attending a, the second meeting of the Pepco Community Advisory Group that I'm a member of, and that's an opportunity to meet with officials at Pepco and ask questions and get information on progress they're making on reliability of the utility. And finally, I just wanted to note that in two weeks, on Saturday, May 15th, Santa Claus has asked me to assist him in his visit to Historic Tacoma from 1:00 to 4:00, and so Santa Claus will be there. And for anybody who wants to go see Santa Claus, a reminder that he will be at Historic Tacoma on Carroll Avenue, 1:00 to 4:00, Saturday, December 15th.
Will we be able to get our picture taken with Santa?
I believe so.
Goody.
Especially if you're small enough to fit on Santa's lap.
Oh, wait a second. I'm talking about a big person here.
I think that's all we have for council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Hi, yes, I have a couple items. First off, I want to say thanks to the Cub Scouts for asking such interesting questions. We did a quick tour of the building and got to see some of the behind-the-scenes things. And they did take an opportunity to sit in the council seats on the dais. So, maybe you can all stand up and kind of wave to the cameras here for a moment? Come on, kids, stand up. Like, where are the cameras?
They're all around.
Well, it's, it's a pleasure having you here.
You didn't have to turn around. There's a camera up here.
They're everywhere. I have a couple other announcements. I guess I do want to mention, councilmember Mayo will be attending, providing testimony to the Montgomery County Delegation Bike County Committee on making sure that WSSC provides notice when there's sewage leaks, when they provide notice to the public and to the city. On December 12th, there will be the Transportation Summit in Annapolis. At this point, I understand, I think I have the mayor and councilmembers Grimes, Schultz, and Daniels-Cohen attending. If anybody else is interested in attending, please let me know, so I can make sure that they have a seat for you. On December 13th, from 12:00 to 2:00 on Thursday, we're going to have a holiday party for staff, so offices will be closed for two hours here in the building. I wanted to just let you know, and I'll send out a message when I get a little bit more information, but the, Daryl Braithwaite, Director of Public Works, met with staff from SHA and several contractors, yes, I guess, today, to talk about the Carroll Avenue Bridge replacement and the timing on that. So, we'll be getting some more information out. Basically, the bridge would be closed for about a year and a half. It's likely that this construction would start in the spring of 2014, so about a year and a half from now. There will be a public meeting in late January coming up, so that the residents will learn some about this. It is going to be a fairly significant, have a fairly significant impact on Tacoma Park. We'll have to do detours. There will be a pedestrian bridge installed, so that at least you can walk across on Carroll Avenue. But there will be rerouting detours at the same time when there'll be the bridge getting replaced over Sligo Creek on New Hampshire. There will be, well, some of the, some of the, there'll be some, there may be some overlap on that. There's, you know, obviously, our Flower Avenue-Green Street project, and we're going to have to make sure that we've timed it so that we get our work done and, and things work out well. But it is going to have an impact. We've asked the folks to consult with Ride On to make sure that the bus routes are well thought-through before the meeting in January, so that residents can kind of learn how things will work. So, just giving you a heads up, we'll send out more information when we get some things a little bit more solid.
Do, do we know the extent of the repairs? Is it, is it a total replacement?
It's a total replacement of the Carroll Avenue Bridge.
And, and that bridge is in the Historic District?
Yes, and it will be replaced as, in the same style that it currently is, but with some added enhancements for the pedestrian and bike lanes that need to go across the bridge. It's quite a big deal. So, we'll keep you posted, and I think at some point, we'll have SHA in to give a presentation on it.
It, I mean, it It will be incredibly disruptive to have New Hampshire, Sligo Creek Parkway, and Carroll closed at the same time.
I don't think that's actually going to happen that way.
Okay.
But, but part of this is just making sure, and, and making sure that, you know, we think it through, we make sure that something doesn't kind of slip in the wrong direction on that.
I mean, I think that should be our, our highest priority as a council, to make sure we don't end up with all of those disruptions happening simultaneously.
That's right. I think it's going to, it's certainly going to be, any one of the things are a disruption, so we're watching that very carefully. But I wanted to let you know as soon as we knew. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. So the next item is a presentation, and this will be an update on the Long Branch Tacoma Park Health Enterprise Zone. And let me just say that we adopted, the council adopted a resolution in July of this year urging community-based organizations and/or the Montgomery County Department of Health include Tacoma Park in a proposed health enterprise zone. And Cheer, who is here this evening to present to us, convened a coalition of stakeholders and partners led by the Primary Care Coalition to prepare and submit a proposal to the State Department of Mental Health and Hygiene to create a health enterprise zone in Long Branch and Tacoma Park. And Bruce Baker and others are here and will provide us with an update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Bruce Baker. I'm the Executive Director of Cheer, which is Community Health and Empowerment through Education and Research. And I'd like to take a little time to, I'm accompanied by people who participated in the preparation, in the health enterprise zone preparation. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves one by one.
Kathy Porter, representing the board of Cheer.
Get the call from the [inaudible].
Okay. I thought you could certainly hear me. Don't need to be recorded for the ages. Kathy Porter, representing the Cheer Board.
I'm Lorie Charcutien, also on the Cheer Board and representing Crossroads Community Food Network in the context of the Health Enterprise Zone.
I'm Pat Tyser, representing Adventist Community Services of Great Washington.
Ronnie Galvin, representing Impact Silver Spring.
I'm Mary Carter Williams, representing the Cheer Board also.
I have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'll go. I understand that I have to be up there to make that, so I'll.
Welcome to the dais.
Thank you. I want to thank all those who are present right now. Putting together the Long Branch Health, the Long Branch Tacoma Park Health Enterprise Zone was, took a lot of effort and a lot of community time, a lot of volunteers and a lot of coalition members participating in it. Let me give you a little more, a little background, first about Cheer and then about the whole Health Enterprise Zone. First, Cheer is a community improvement process and that operates in Tacoma Park and Long Branch. And we have a three-step process that we pretty much take, which is to first engage people, residents of the community, in a process of visioning and goal-setting. And then, secondly, having people measure and understand the gaps between the vision and the current conditions in the community. And third, formulating actions that they can take that can bridge the gaps. In 2008 to 2009, with city council funding, Cheer conducted an indicator selection processes for housing, health and local economy. As part of this effort, we hoped to produce a community report card on health. However, when we came to look at the health indicators, we found that there was very little community-level data. Virtually all of the data of interest was at the county level as a whole. And so we began a process of trying to generate some local data that could be useful. Our work in the, in health brought us into, let me make sure clear before I go on, that the area of the zip, of the Health Enterprise Zone, as specified by the state, has to be a ZIP code level. So 20912, all of 20912 and 20903 are in the Health Enterprise Zones, which represent Tacoma Park and Long Branch. Our work in health brought us into contact with the Primary Care Coalition, which is the nonprofit organization that oversees the healthcare clinics for the uninsured and undocumented in Montgomery County. PCC and Cheer have formed a partnership that brings Cheer's community-driven improvement process into coordination with the lead healthcare provider for the poor and uninsured in Montgomery County. Our shared goal is to improve population health, especially among racial and ethnic groups that show disproportionately high levels of preventable disease and illness, and to improve healthcare quality at lower cost. The Maryland Health Enterprise Zone Program, created this year under the leadership of Governor O'Malley and Lieutenant Governor Anthony Brown, provided us with an opportunity to form a coalition of healthcare providers, local government and local community-based organizations to reduce health disparities, improve access to healthcare and reduce healthcare costs in focused and coordinated, in a focused and coordinated place-based approach in Tacoma Park and Long Branch. Another motivation behind the Health Enterprise Zone is to bring into, is to address the social determinants of health. These social determinants of health include housing, neighborhood quality, economic security, social connections and the level of hope and opportunity that residents have for their lives. It is well-established in public health research that social determinants of health have a bigger impact on health than access to care. Consequently, the HEZ program was designed to empower residents in all aspects of their lives, including things such as improvements in housing, recreation and economic conditions. Cheer is the convening organization for the Long Branch Health Enterprise Zone. Our coalition includes all the major healthcare providers serving this area. Washington Adventist Hospital and Holy Cross Hospital have both been particularly active and supportive of this process. We also have participation from all the community clinics for the uninsured, including the two federally qualified health centers in the area, Mary Center and Community Clinic Incorporated. The coalition also includes local government support from the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services and from the City of Tacoma Park. And I am especially grateful to Councilmember Jarrett Smith for his leadership in supporting this effort and to all of the entire Tacoma Park City Council for your financial support for the preparation of this proposal. Without that support, we would not have been able to make this proposal at all. Also included in the coalition are many community-based organizations and groups. These include local service organizations such as Adventist Community Services, represented here tonight by Pat Tyser, Impact Silver Spring, represented here tonight by Ronnie Galvin. And Casa de Maryland is also a member of the coalition. HEZ Coalition also includes faith-based organizations such as Clifton Park Baptist Church, God Glorified Church of God in Christ and represent, and people from, and the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. It includes local business organizations such as the Crossroads Community Food Network, represented here tonight by Lorie Charcutien. And also Tacoma Langley Crossroads Community Development Authority has been helpful in this process. And many other small organizations whose participation involvement will be key to successfully addressing health disparities in Tacoma Park and Long Branch. Cheer has articulated governing principles and a preliminary structure for making this coalition work in an ongoing way. These principles are designed to make the HEZ community, a community-driven process that incorporates the elements of successful collaborations widely known as collective One of the key goals of this proposal is the development of local information gathering and data sharing. This information will be used to improve the quality of life for all residents, especially for those experiencing the greatest challenges to their health and well-being. Cheer has been advocating local data development for the past three years. This year, we have seen progress. For example, Healthy Montgomery has just produced for the first time data on hospital utilization and emergency room use for certain major diseases by ZIP code. The HEZ will further develop local data gathering capacity. In particular, the HEZ will conduct an annual survey of residents in the targeted areas of Tacoma Park and Long Branch to assess behaviors, attitudes and other measures of well-being. The HEZ will also monitor hospital utilization rates and ED usage, ED being emergency departments, emergency rooms, gather program participation and performance data, aggregate clinic data on measures of diabetes control and measure the share of preventable and unnecessary emergency room visits. Our long-term goal is to develop big data capabilities that will integrate demographic, social and economic data with health data and locally generated data that can be used to identify and address the conditions within the community that most profoundly affect And here's, in preparing this proposal, we were able, we found out from the available data some things that we had not known before. For example, we recently learned that Tacoma, that Tacoma Park, the 20912 ZIP code, has the highest diabetes hospitalization rate for any ZIP code in the county. And far above the average for the state, way above the median for the state. Similarly, we also found out that the emergency room visits related to alcohol abuse in Montgomery, in 20912 are the highest in the county by far, exceeding all other ZIP codes by far. But we've also developed demographic maps and that demonstrate the diversity of patients using Montgomery Care's Safety Net Clinics for healthcare. You see from this map that we have a large number of languages represented among patients who have diabetes in this area. And diabetes is the focus for this, for the HEZ, for the Health Enterprise Zone grant. The state's Health Enterprise Zone program specifies six major goals. Broadly speaking, the goals of the state's programs are to increase access to healthcare and reduce health disparities by addressing the social determinants of health in targeted ZIP codes. But the Long Branch, the Long Branch Health Enterprise Zone developed four basic strategic approaches to address the goals of the state's HEZ program. The first is facilitating or, and supporting healthy lifestyles through community support programs that improve access to healthy food and nutrition, education, recreational activities and fitness programs, and also community improvements. Here's a few examples of, on this slide is a few examples of some of the community-based programs that will be implemented if the Health Enterprise Zone is fully implemented, fully funded. It includes some of the things like the, a food and nutrition, or the Healthy Eating Tacoma Prescription Program, which is the fruit and veg, also known as the Fruit and Vegetable Prescription Program, that allows people who, when they see a healthcare provider, this is low-income people, who, when they see a healthcare provider and they are at risk of diabetes, they get a prescription to buy fruits and vegetables at the local farmer's market. And they, and they take that prescription and get discounts on that. The idea is to get them, people who aren't normally integrated, to get them integrated into healthy eating and eating foods that they may not be accessing now. Also included is a micro grants for community improvement. This allows small community-based groups that may not have had, that may have small amounts of resources to do a health and nutrition or community improvement projects that improve the built environment or address community needs that relate to social determinants, such as economic opportunity, economic, financial literacy possibly, and other programs that could help people get the support they need to improve, because these are the, these are the kinds of programs and the kinds of approaches that really help turn the curve on preventing and controlling diabetes, because they have such a strong social base. I want to go back to the Long Branch Health Enterprise. Some of the other strategies that include, are improving, are enhancing and coordinating patient health education and clinical treatment of diabetic and prediabetic patients in order for patients to improve their health literacy and manage their diabetes better. And also to get more social support. The third item on this list is the increasing the effectiveness of existing network and building new networks of culturally competent and community-connected navigators and outreach workers. The HEZ proposes the coordination of approximately 90 health promoters that serve around the county, in the county's minority health initiatives at Holy Cross Hospital and at Casa de Maryland. But it also provides for expansion of the health promoters programs and training of 18 new health promoters from the Long Branch community who will serve solely in the Long Branch community. All the other health promoters serve countywide or some other geographical region. This gives us a chance to have 18 dedicated health promoters in our community. The final strategy is to promote workforce, is to increase the primary care workforce who are serving uninsured and Medicaid-eligible people in the Health Enterprise Zone. So in conclusion, the major purposes of this proposal are to, is to create a multi-sectoral coalition of government, healthcare providers, nonprofit service providers and community and faith-based organizations to coordinate efforts to reduce diabetes and improve the quality of life for all Tacoma Park and Long Branch. To do this, we will be using best practices known for guiding collaborations. And these are known as the collective impact measures. These include, whoops, I'm, these include these, these are the Health Enterprise Zone collective impact programs, elements. They include having a common agenda. They include having mutually supportive activities, that the activities support each other. A common measurement system, which is energized by the data gathering process that we're going to be doing. Constant communication, which is essential to all good collaboration, and a backbone organization structure, meaning that there's an infrastructure of, that serves the coalition and makes sure that the interests of the coalition move forward. And with that, we're, we will, I and all members of participating are, we happy to take questions.
Thank you for that presentation. And how quickly will this happen if you get funding?
I'll take my proper place. We, we should find out by the end of December, the status of our, of our grant. And the, according to what I've heard, January is the start date, so it's very fast.
Yeah. And I hope and assume you'll get funding. Are there backup plans if you don't?
Yes. If we, this is a competitive process and we're hopeful that we'll have the city council's support, letters of support to promote this with, and, but we also would like your support because we will be taking these ideas and programs. A lot of these ideas were generated at the community level along, you know, through the course of the past year to, so that, and we plan to take them forward to other funders, potential funders. We know others that are interested, some have already expressed interest in helping support or complement what we're doing with the Health Enterprise Zone. So even if we don't get funding, this process will continue to go forward and we'll fund it piecemeal, piece by piece, until we are able to achieve what the Health Enterprise Zone objectives are.
That's good to hear because it seems like a very comprehensive approach.
Yeah.
Other questions? Oh, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Bruce. I have, like the mayor said, I've been supporting this since it started. I think it's really important, especially for Ward 5, that has a large population of people that have diabetes. I have put together a letter of support that I'm submitting to other elected officials to have them sign. I would, I'm happy to say that recently I had lunch with county council member, or county council executive, I'm sorry, Ike Leggett, and he did agree to sign the letter of support. of support. So thank you very much, and I look forward to when this becomes a reality.
Thank you. That's very, that's very good news.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes, thank you for the work in putting this together. It sounds like a Tacoma Park City letter of support would be in order, and so I would move, if it's parliamentarily proper, that the council write a letter of support and get it out as soon as possible.
I think we can do that without objection.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Seeman.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, and thank you, Bruce, and team, for coming here tonight and for all the work that went into this. You know, I'm on the email list and seen many communications and seen this thing evolve into what it is today, and really appreciate the work that you all put into that. And it's, it shows in the presentation here tonight, and the way that you took a gigantic problem and kind of narrowed it down into something that was manageable and doable, and hopefully it's going to be fundable. So best wishes for that. You know, you've answered the questions that I had, and I certainly support the moving forward with the letter, so anything else we can do, let us know.
Councilmember Schultz.
Hi, Bruce. There we go. Now it's on. How many, how many people participated in the planning of this? I know that was, because the emails I got had lengthy lists, but I'd really like to get a sort of an idea, because I know it took many, many hands.
Oh, yeah. Well, let me give, we had, first of all, I'd go back, this process sort of was helped, we did a lot of groundwork in advance before the HEZ proposal actually started, where we had, we did a community, the CHIR did a community strategic planning process, which involved 160 people, and that helped inform. And then we had a, before that, I mean, that includes the people who were participating in the indicator selection process. But in this particular proposal, there are about 50 people on the HEZ coalition list. There were about 30 participants in the program committee, and not all of those, that is, it includes some people who aren't on the other list. It's not a, and, let's see, and the data committee had an additional four or five people participating. So I guess altogether, we maybe had 70 people who had, were 70 to 80 people involved in some way.
Yeah, it's just a tremendous organizing thing. It's one thing, our experience, to get people all excited about something. It's another thing to get them to actually sit down and work together and come up with something like you've got here tonight, and this is truly impressive. The next sort of big question I have is, what, I haven't read the proposal, obviously, but what is, assuming you get funded, or whether, I guess whether you get funded or not, program's going to try and get it, go ahead, what will be the metrics of this? How will you track progresses? I'm sure that's all built in, isn't it, into your proposal, as to, say, over a period of time, you implement these, these programs, social programs that help improve the social environment, and presumably your indicators are going to be, you're going to be watching, are the diabetes indicators, is that not right?
Those are the outcome measures.
Yeah.
In the proposal, there were work plans with specific goals for each of the strategies and each of the programs, so we'll be able to monitor those. But also, we also have an evaluation component, which is a very important part of the proposal.
Sure.
And we have partnerships, and one of our HEZ coalition members, I should have maybe included them in the list, a professor from Georgetown University is Alfie Breland, Breland Nobles, is, will be performing an internal evaluation for us as we go along. And the data and evaluation are so important to this process, we're also going to have a dedicated staff person and the infrastructure, who, a person who will be shared by Primary Care Coalition and CHIR to gather data, excuse me, to gather the data and to produce the reports that are necessary to monitor on a quarterly basis how each program is operating and how, and all the things that add up to the outcome measure, which is reduced diabetes.
Sure. Thank you so much. Either way, we've got to see that this goes forward, this happens, and I'll certainly lend whatever help I can in that regard.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. One quick question. You mentioned a statistic that this ZIP code leads the county in.
Diabetes.
Diabetes hospitalization. Hospitalization, thank you. Two follow-ups, you may, I think you heard in the opening comments that we're doing this citywide survey. So that seems like a great opportunity to potentially ask some questions that could be very relevant to, as a baseline essentially, for the work you're doing. It's predicated on, you know, success in getting the grant, or at least moving forward with projects, but I think it would be fantastic if CHIR and the whole group could come back to council in writing or at the January meeting and help us come up with some questions that could help you set baseline. And so I just urge you to think about that, and maybe you have some ideas already. The other piece is that, as you know, we've been dealing with the issue of the hospital's proposed move, and the questions of what would remain on the campus in terms of medical facilities, and, you know, at least my understanding of their interest is to maintain a form of a medical campus with lots of services. And so that, to me, the timing, if you were successful in getting this grant, and then the hospital looking to figure out what the mix of services would be on the campus, that might be a really nice opportunity to try to think about some of the service provider gaps for preventative care or for, you know, treatment. And so I wonder if you've thought about that at all, or if there's, if you do think there's opportunity there.
I'm sorry, what was the?
With, in terms of CHIR or this group making recommendations for medical services, new or different service providers that could, that could exist on the hospital, the current hospital campus.
Oh, right, right. One of the important components of this is to expand the primary care, primary care workforce. So we have a number of new proposals, and we have an innovative proposal, some innovative proposals. One of our measures and our goals is to increase the number of primary care providers who serve uninsured, or who serve Medicaid or the low-income population. So any, we would watch, we would, if there was a relocation, we would see what would, if, how that would affect the numbers, and how it would affect people's usage of medical services. And we would be able to have the data baseline to watch that. So, and, and we would, because that's one of the important elements of the program, I'm sure we would probably have make recommendations that do relate to where we could place primary care providers, where we could provide, and maybe even provide specialists who focus on, such as, who focus on diabetes, and to make sure that the full, the whole picture of, the whole spectrum of preventive to care services is available to everyone in the area, in the HEZ.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, come on.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow. Yeah, that's, that's a tough act to follow, even with a good question, a very impressive presentation. How, and I may not be allowed to ask this, but what kind of funding are you asking for, Bruce? Am I allowed to?
Yeah, yeah, you can ask that question.
Can I, I mean, what's it going to take to make this happen? What's the grant?
The state has, has, yeah, our grant request is for $1.3 million in the first year to be distributed among all the partner organizations and among many partner organizations.
Right.
And it's about 1.2 for each succeeding year, so it's about $5 million over four years.
Okay, that's what I thought, I heard some, a word like that. What surprised me in some of your, do you need some water?
No.
Were some of the findings, the diabetes is in the 20912 ZIP code, hospitalization for diabetes is way above, above the norm, and alcohol abuse. Both of those are, wow, I, that kind of shook me a little bit, the two of them, because I'm not sure how preventable diabetes is. I think it is, I'm not, alcoholism, of course, is possibly preventable, but that really impressed me. What can we do besides the letter as a council? I mean, should we each send a letter? Is it better if it goes, a letter of support as one with all of our signatures, or is it more impressive if each one of us does our own? What will make it be best for you all?
I don't know the answer to that particular question. I can check with, is there anybody here? Does that have an idea?
More is better, sometime.
All of the above?
Yeah, sometimes more is better, sometimes it isn't, but.
Maybe also some help in talking to some of the other elected officials in the cap.
Oh, yeah, right. Why don't you, is it just going to say that?
I didn't recognize Ronnie without his bow tie.
And Elizabeth, actually, was the one from our office that put the presentation together. Wave your hand in the air like you just don't care. I would just say, the letter from the council would be spectacular, but not if, when we get the grant. If each one of you could activate your networks, use your influence the best way you can to bring more support, and not just money, although money works, but just more partners and players to the work that we're trying to do. I think that's the biggest thing that you can do, because Bruce and the coalition's done a great job getting this thing moving, but we need more folks to jump on board with what we're trying to do here. So that'd be the biggest thing.
Yeah, I didn't say thank you. This was, this was an amazing proposal, and wow, it's, thank you so much, all of you all, for all the work that you've done, plus all the bazillion other people behind you. It's huge, really, really impressive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Keep us informed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we'll let you know.
As things progress.
You say end of December, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be, they're supposed to let us know by the end of December.
Between the 25th and the 31st?
Probably, I don't know.
Okay. That would be the end of December.
I was hoping to get, to find out by December 21st, so I can, actually, that would be as soon as possible, so we can get started.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to our first voting item, and this is the Single Reading Ordinance Awarding Contract for Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. Who wants to?
I guess I'll cover that.
Okay.
Darryl will be here, but in any event, we've got a proposal here for the council to authorize issuing a contract with the Brendel Group for the environmental, development of an environmental sustainable action plan and preparation of a greenhouse gas inventory. We had, bids went out in September, were opened on October 15th, we received six proposals. They ranged from a price tag of about $50,000 to over $165,000. We reviewed the six proposals, we had a review team of Darryl Rathwaite, Tim Males, and myself. We reviewed the six proposals, we selected the two highest-rated proposals for consultant interviews, we did the interviews last week. After reviewing the proposals and having the interviews, we unanimously recommended the Brendel Group as the correct group, we think, to work with. They were quite impressive, they had a very long experience working with similarly sized jurisdictions to create the plans. They've been doing it for many years, and it was impressive how standard they had gotten the process. The actual resulting tool for part of this is something that we can use and adjust over time, so it's not a report that sits on a shelf, but it's actually something we can always use and update on our own. Although price was not a factor of the choice, it is the second cheapest of the six proposals, and was quite efficient. We did have concerns, because the team is based in Fort Collins, Colorado, and we wanted to ensure that there was adequate participation with the community and understanding of the In everything that, in the reference checks that we did, every indication is they're very good at participating in whichever community they're in. Nevertheless, we do recommend adding a few extra visits to the budget for this proposal, for a total not to exceed price of $81,000. I don't know, Tim, would you like to say anything else about the proposals?
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of details. In our earlier council discussion that led to this, the creation of this RFP, I think there was a strong, just a leaning from my colleagues, that we wanted to get some, get help that would produce a plan quickly, that would help make the decisions more clear for us in terms of choices to make, and future investments, and tweaks to city programs, and that would help us move on to implementation quickly. And I think this is a group that's going to be able to really integrate community participation very well, and produce that plan very quickly. And from what I've seen of the body of documentation, the body of reports and things that they have done for other communities, they produce things that are very accessible. You can read them, and you can understand what it is that, what the choices are. In regards to the local issue, they, while they are based in Fort Collins, they have a Virginia partner to this proposal. They have worked in Greensboro, North Carolina, Cleveland, Ohio, they work currently, or maybe the subsidiary does, in Maryland with one of the state environment departments, and also in Pennsylvania, so they have, you know, experience in this area. And the last piece that I, and I think this is, this was true for any of the contracts, is we put this together with the sense that this would be a first step, and then we're imagining how a potential contractor could play a role with subsequent implementation, and they have that experience as well. So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be the right choice. For example, if we were looking for somebody to go and screw in light bulbs, or put foam insulation in someone's house, that's not, not at that level of door-to-door service providing, but in terms of how to make, how to change code, how to evaluate current code and adjust it, or how to build out program implementation, you know, getting the details right, that'd be very helpful for that. So I think that's all I would add.
Darryl, did you want to add anything?
Do you want to say anything about?
I'm sorry, I lost track of time. I thought you were going to go on longer than you last did. I was up at the public work office, and when I heard you announce it, flew in my car. Anyway, it's been a long and interesting process. I don't know if you've gone through the details, we had six proposals received, all very well-prepared. We definitely are in a situation where there's some extensive experienced firms out there offering these types of services, so we took a real careful look through the proposals, we did interviews of two firms, and the Brendel Group just stood out as a clear leader in what we reviewed. It's significant to me, because I was worried as well about being out of state and how that might transfer information and accessibility, but both in the proposal process, as well as in our interview, which was done through webinar, they were incredibly clear, concise, direct, relevant. They really have, they worked on that issue before, they've been able to bridge the distance and make you feel like you're sitting right next to somebody, in terms of their ability to understand the issues, and come up with very solid progressive solutions to, you know, reaching our goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So we were very encouraged in our meetings with them, as well as the other firm we interviewed.
Can you just say a little bit about the time, the supposed timeframe on this? What I'm thinking about is there was a laid-out timeframe that is taking it kind of into maybe October.
Yeah.
And thinking about the funding that we have in the budget for this fiscal year, and how that, how this fits with that piece. Are we assuming that this, we will use this part of the money this year, and do we have other things that we're going to do with other pieces of that money, or we're going to be looking at? to be looking at going forward in the next fiscal year?
Well, the proposal that was provided from Brendel Group is a 10-month work plan. So, that'll carry us outside of this current fiscal year into the next. And the price they offer is just around $75,000. Obviously, we've got a budget of $200,000 available, so we'll use a portion of that for the work, and we'll have funds available. We are continuing to explore some other avenues for programming with those funds, the most relevant being a food waste composting program. And I've currently received two proposals from two different firms, offering a winter startup of some food waste composting programs. So, I'm very encouraged that we'll be able to get something going in the not-too-distant future, for probably on the range of 300, 400 households in a pilot program. So, we'll be using some of the funds for that, probably in the $10,000 range, if there's other programming that, or other program ideas that come available. The biggest issue right now, of course, is staffing to implement and proceed. So, I don't know of anything else currently on the forefront, other than those, the sustainability program and the food waste compost program.
So, it sounds like we have some flexibility with the potential to move forward with some items this year, if that works.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Mayo, do you want to introduce this?
Can I make one more opening comment?
Sure.
Just relevant to your last question. It is that Brendel and their initial proposal to us sort of laid out two options, and one was really deeper planning and a little bit more work on a greenhouse gas inventory, and the other was to reduce some of the planning component and the cost of the greenhouse gas inventory, and focus on implementation of one piece, or explaining how the city could implement one piece. That will obviously depend on identifying something early on through the TFEA report, or the earlier 2000 or 2001 action plan, that already showed up as something the community was very interested in, and then building that out. So, if they choose that option, and that would be, I think, my recommendation, I think that's where we were leaning when we reviewed the proposal, that might identify something more quickly that would, for which we could use those resources, more quickly than the 10-month timeline.
That's good to know. Now, would you like to introduce it?
You mean move it?
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Why the comment, or a couple of questions?
Oh, we're going to do comments and questions. I just wanted to get it on the table. Councilmember Grimes.
All right, Ms. Braithwaite. Yeah. So, you made me think of something that's slightly off-topic, but you've started a pilot already with larger recycling containers. Do you have any feedback on that, given the short time that it's been out there? I'm just curious, though.
Yeah, people started picking them up the week before Thanksgiving, so we really don't have any feedback at all yet. We're hoping to get feedback in two ways. One's from the staff ourselves, that are handling the collection of those containers, just in terms of workability, convenience, what they're finding in terms of collection, as well as what they find in the container, contamination rates, weights, volume within the container. And then we'll also be communicating with the folks that picked up, you know, one of the 100 people that picked up the containers. Primarily, we'll probably be doing a mail-in survey with some, you know, questions about usability, anecdotal discussions, and inquiring as to whether they felt like it increased their recycling. Since we don't have on-truck weight capacity, weighing capacity, or in our yard weighing capacity, we can't do a scientific evaluation, but we're looking more at, you know, kind of the side issues of, do people feel like it encouraged more recycling? Was it helpful for them? Did it make it more convenient?
Sure.
Also, we'll be asking them if they would have an option, would they be willing to pay for the container, since that's a big cost factor in the process.
Okay, yes, I wanted to address that to you while you were still standing there. And then I also wanted to agree with what Councilmember Mayo said, that we definitely shouldn't wait for reports from this consultancy. That shouldn't block us from implementing other things that we can do that seem worth doing. So, there'll be, it was unclear to me whether we want to have continued discussion. Now, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, which is, well, it's more a note that we're going to be appointing soon a new environment committee, and that I hope there'll be a very strong role for that environment committee, both in consultation with the contractor and in implementing anything that the contractor comes up with. Well, so that was quick.
Councilmember Schultz.
That was sort of my question, too, is that, is the proposed contractor here, the Brendel Group, prepared to meet with our green team, or the committee, and the Committee on the Environment, such as it may be constituted from time to time during this 10-month contract period, so that they can get the benefit of input from the community at large?
Yes, I mean, that's part of the design of the program, and they have quite a strong history of that in other communities, of working with the various committees that are established.
So, that was part of the reason for bringing in those extra visits?
Right.
Oh, good. The other question I have is the one that we debated for so long, when we were trying to figure out how to get started, or how to initiate this thing. We talked about the possibility of hiring a staff person who would be hired to be a sustainability coordinator. We ended up opting instead to solicit a company that could bring forth a broad array of knowledge and skills. And I'm sort of wondering that, after we have used, fully utilized the service of this organization, would they be in a position, or how could we possibly think about transitioning to where we would phase out this consulting relationship, and perhaps, and I'm not saying this is what we should do, but might we, we might want to be thinking about phasing in a full-time employee who would be the sustainability coordinator for the future?
Well, the, one of the end products, the main end product, are deliverable in addition to updating the greenhouse gas inventory, is an action plan that'll identify short, medium, and long-term goals. So, once that's crystallized and created and council-approved, we'll have a roadmap forward, and then we'll be able to determine what's the best way to meet those goals, whether it's in-house staff, consulting staff, contractual arrangements, based on what the programs are, you know. So, we're really waiting to see what those program outlines are, what kind of skillsets they would need, before we bring someone on to implement those.
So, in effect, it might be that the preconceived notion of having a full-time FTE, sustainability coordinator, might not be our ultimate outcome here. It might be that it would be a hybrid solution, where we would continue to use some of our budget, assign some of our budget to using outside resources to help us with complex or technological issues.
Yeah. Well, you can envision that some of the, no doubt, recommendations will be related to energy efficiency within multifamily and commercial units, and so how best to make that happen could potentially be with audit firms and energy consultants, and not an in-house person. But we'll need someone to oversee and guide and direct that program.
Because I always know that, no matter how good the consultant we have, this sounds like a real ace, from what we've heard, is that you have to have the staff person, the complimentary staff person, in-house to work with them.
Right.
They just can't float out there in orbit around us.
Right. One of the things that was exciting to me was that the Brendel Group's proposal included the development of the action plan, which would actually be a document that was living and breathing and updatable in a simple format. So, not only will we have the roadmap, we'll have the ways to integrate our actual results into that document, so that it maintains our records and our future guiding, you know, documents can be integrated to show us what we've accomplished, based on the goals that we set out.
Well, pardon my enthusiasm, but this really sounds exciting, in all sincerity.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Susie had said. The base proposal itself called for Brendel to meet with the council, with the task force, and with other stakeholders and community leaders. What we added to that was additional potential for community meetings, in case we want to have a envisioning event, or, you know, public process, where we really want to bring people in, or charade, or kind of brainstorming over issues. So, we wanted to supplement what they'd already laid out in their plan.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, call.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, when this all first came up, it had a life of its own before I even got on the council. I was envisioned a human being, not a consulting firm, and I can see now, you know, it's one of those, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Do we get a human being, and then have them work with a consulting firm, and/or staff? Or do we get a consulting firm and go to a human being? So, whatever, I mean, it looks like, it sounds like Brendel is your choice and excellent. Everyone's words have been very positive, and it looks like it can roll into the possibility of a human being to actually oversee all the programs, because I'm not sure that, as wonderful and as elegant and graceful as Daryl is, this may be way too much for her to have on her plate at the same time, as being Director of Public Works. So, as well as she does that job, this one, you know, this is a whole nother avenue. So, I'm about, let's get it going. 10 months is longer than I'd even fathom, but if that's what it's going to take, that's what it's going to take, just to get it going. I'm a yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Daryl, I had a question. Thank you. Now, in talking to the Brendel Group, when they put together their recommendations for energy efficiency, and especially for like small, commercial property owners, will there be grants that are going to be provided by the city, partial or full, to help them comply? Or how do they foresee getting this energy efficiency?
Well, there's a variety of avenues. One of the things that they'll be exploring are what are the grant and funding possibilities available to us, and how might we capitalize on them? There is some money available through the Maryland Energy Administration, but you have to have a certain type of program to access it. There is money available through the state for commercial properties that our planning office even facilitates with folks right now. But it's, part of it will be, you know, promoting, advertising, identifying businesses that, you know, have a potential interest, and then linking them to the money. So, part of what they'll be laying out for us is the different funding options. The council may decide, and they'll lay out options, where we may have a revolving loan fund of some type, or we may create different types of funding structures, or offsets of other certain costs. I mean, that's kind of into the future in an implementation phase, but they will identify existing funding and potential grant sources for money. So, I would imagine it'll be a mix of monies, both from the city, as well as other sources.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Daryl, and Councilmember Mayo, for doing the hard work of evaluating these various proposals, and really coming back with a recommendation. And I certainly support the recommendation. From everything I've seen, and from what I've heard here tonight, I think that we're now ready to move forward. And I would especially like to thank Councilmember Mayo for his leadership on bringing us to this point, where we're actually ready to go out and let a contract, after several years of thinking we were about to. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember Schultz's comment. I think, in terms of whether we do it in-house, whether we hire staff, or whether we use a firm like this, you could clearly see how, I could clearly see how, doing the interview with them, with six people on the interview from their side, and then almost seamlessly being able to move between a community outreach person and the president of the company, to the engineers, to the engineers who, and I should say, the engineers who focus on energy, versus the engineers who focus on broader aspects of sustainability. That's the advantage, that's what you get from a consultant, a good consultant, at least for a time, is that you get, you know, you get more than one person, more than one body of expertise. And so, I can see, I think, depending on what I imagine would be some of the programs we might start with, based on the community interests we've seen so far, there would be a role for that for a while, where a single person on staff would be isolated, I think. So, anyway, just to speak to that issue, I think eventually you need to staff it, and maybe, depending on how quickly we want to ramp up, we might need a person dedicated to working with them. But I do think the consultant has value, as opposed to on-city staff initially. And to Councilmember Smith's comment, you know, that's a great example of how a consultant like this can be helpful in a 10-month timeline. They could say, actually, you know, a lot of communities have tried grants, some communities have tried property tax abatement, some communities have tried a revolving loan fund, and every time, this is the one that gets greater adoption rates, you know, greater penetration in the market, you know, whatever the answer is. They'll be able to give that answer to us, so we, as a council and a community, won't have to grapple with, well, you know, without any data. And so, I think that's, and I think they have 16 years of experience doing this sort of work, and helping in particular, I think, communities like us. They will be able to answer some of those questions, and we won't have to guess, I guess. Thank you.
But at the same time, they're also going to be educating us, so that we're all just going to get a whole lot smarter about, just in our own selves, not to mention our staff, and not to mention all the people in the committee of environment. We're all going to get educated and become much more knowledgeable and smarter about what's going on, in a world where programs and technology are changing so fast, regarding environment. So, it should be a very interesting growth curve.
Okay, that takes curve. Council comments? Are there any public comments on this Single Reading Ordinance awarding the contract?
Members of council, I'm Joe Edgell. I was one of the co-chairs of the Task Force on Environmental Action. I'm very excited to see that you guys are finally moving forward on this. It's worthy of note that it was about two and a half years ago that Task Force on Environmental Action made its report to council. Particular thanks go out to the Evaluating Committee, the Acting City Manager, Councilmember Mayo, and of course, the Public Works Director, Daryl Braithwaite. I think it's important to note that in the Task Force report two and a half years ago, we recommended, and I'm quoting here, that the city commit sufficient staff, including hiring a sustainability coordinator by the end of 2010, that's two years ago, to coordinate the city's efforts. So, while this is definitely a good step forward, hiring the consulting firm, I think there's still more to be done in hiring a person on staff, hopefully a director, somebody who is on par with the other folks, to really show council's priority and move this forward. As you know, there was a number of, rather, a certain amount of money set aside, the two prior years that hasn't been spent, and the amount spent on this is significantly less than the amount budgeted for this position for two prior years, and the environmental efforts. So, because the city hasn't moved forward, it's saved quite a bit of money, but it saved money to the detriment of the environment. So, I think it's important that this is happening, and I want to thank you all for doing it, but I don't want you to lose sight that this is just the beginning, that there's so much more that we can and probably should be doing.
Thank you. Other public comments? Councilmember Seaman, do you have a question?
Yes, a follow-up to Mr. Edgell's comments. I wondered if that money that hasn't been spent for the last couple of years is sitting around in a bucket somewhere in one of our hallways, it's still going to be available for use on this?
Yeah, we haven't spent it.
I thought you had it. We haven't spent it, but have we carried that forward? Is it still in an account somewhere that we can use it?
It is in the Public Works account right now, yes.
All right, thank you.
Money from past years?
We have $200,000 allocated this year.
But we don't have the carryover money. It went back into the general fund.
Right. Nevertheless, I mean, I think one of the things that is important here is that we're very fortunate, I think, to be able to recommend a firm that has lots of experience, has a real usable, understandable process and outcome, and the price is pretty good, so we can spend things on implementation, which could be very useful.
I'm Sachi Vini-Kleikulsa, Ward Two, also a former Task Force on Environmental Action Committee member. And I wasn't going to repeat the comments here, but just to clarify that Bruce, Mayor Williams, he brought up the point. Williams, he brought up the point that we already have $200,000 budgeted for two previous years. That was actually 150 for the first year and only added another 50 for the next year. So I would encourage, as we're discussing the reallocation of some of this rebate money that's coming from the county or the state, I think it's the county, we take a chunk of that and make sure that we're funding this at a full level, even for the years we haven't spent it. So it really should be 300,000 now and another 150 come this next cycle. So we'll have a good chunk of money to both spend on the consultants and the plan and implementation and ramp up, should we see opportunity to do so. And then increase the funding as soon as we show that we can save money while doing all these especially cost-effective actions first.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no more public comment, we will vote on this ordinance, since it's a single reading ordinance. We'll need to call a roll call vote. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Okay, that carries unanimously, that is approved. Excuse me. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
So move, second.
It's a, there's a single reading ordinance on the consent agenda, so we will need a roll call vote on the consent agenda as well. Would you like to call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons.
Aye.
That carries unanimously as well. Since it's 9:11, why don't we take a real short break? And then we will come back for our work session items. We have three of them, and the first one up, as soon as we come back, will be discussion of Ritchie Avenue traffic restrictions. Let's try and be back by, no later than 9:20. make a few introductory comments?
Thank you. I just want to draw your attention to the package, which gives a little bit of background on the proposal to put in the traffic restriction signs on Ritchie Avenue while the traffic calming measures are being constructed. One of the, a couple of things that I wanted to mention was that the plans for constructing the traffic calming measures on Ritchie Avenue are currently at the 90% level. They will be addressed, discussed with the Ritchie Citizens Association on Wednesday. Final design plans will then be prepared. The plans can be finalized over the winter. The actual construction and installation of them will not take long when there's, when that's the opportunity to do so, when the weather is good and the, and the team is available to do the construction. There were several complaints that were received when the traffic signs, traffic restriction signs were installed in September. We received complaints from folks who wanted to make the turns, especially those whose children attend the Green Hill Childcare Center on Geneva Avenue. We did receive a contact from the school system, transportation staff, indicating that ten school bus stops have been affected in terms of the routing of the school buses. My guess is it has to do with all of the different restrictions, it's not just the ones for Ritchie Avenue. Obviously, public works drivers are not supposed to be making those turns as well. Tacoma Park Police Officers have not issued citations to those motorists going to the childcare center as a courtesy. And if you look on the salmon sheet, we do have information on the various citations that have been issued and warnings on the Ritchie Avenue, Maple Avenue intersection, and the Maple Avenue-Hilltop Road intersection. There have been several suggestions made by members of the public, council members and staff, and I've listed them here, that stickers are similar indicators we issued to certain drivers to allow them to make the turns against the provisions of the signs, that the signs identified along Ritchie Avenue be replaced with local traffic-only signs, that the signs have a sign added saying "Accept Government Vehicles," which would allow the school buses and the public works vehicles to access the area, or that the signs be removed in a right-of-way, as opposed to waiting until the traffic calming measures are implemented. And that's, any of those actions can be taken by council, by an amendment of Resolution 201034. And I've attached 201034 and the clarifying resolution, which was 2012-9. The staff recommendation is that you either maintain the current provisions of 201034, or you vote to remove the signs. I really don't like the option of exceptions and stickers and those kinds of things. I think that it sends a strange signal when some people are allowed to turn and others are not. I think it adds confusion. Certainly, the issue of local traffic-only signs, the interpretation of who is local traffic is pretty much up to the driver, as opposed to any kind of common understanding of an area that it applies to. I'm not taking a position on the "Accept Government Vehicles." I'm sure that our public works staff would love to have that added, but I don't think that they should have some exception that others don't have. So those are the various points I wanted to mention, and look forward to the discussion.
Just let me get clarification on the, on the salmon sheet. These are totals since the implementation up to pretty much current?
The numbers of, the number of citations and warnings that are there are, are up to through last week. Down, this part that just talked about the activity on September 13th just gives an indication of an early number of the, where the different folks were headed.
Okay. So the, so the total so far has been, at the Maple-Ritchie intersection, there have been 34 warnings and one ticket?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought it just might be a little helpful to go back and remember the history of how we got here. You know, it was some time ago that the residents of Sligo Park Hills neighborhood approached the county about putting traffic restrictions on those roads, and the reason being that there was a great deal of cut-through traffic through the neighborhood on roads that are very narrow, without sidewalks, and, and very problematic. Later studies showed, traffic studies showed that there were, I think, over 200 vehicles per hour that were cutting through that neighborhood on the narrow streets. And, and so anyways, so whether right or wrong, the county went through a process that did put in traffic restrictions during rush hours on the Sligo Park Hills roads. In anticipation of that, the city council discussed, you know, what would the impact be on the city of Tacoma Park residents, and how could we mitigate any problems that might come up because of the Sligo Park Hills restrictions? And as part of that discussion, there were, there were a lot of different suggestions made, but it finally resulted in a public process of, of, you know, what is going to, how do we work together as a community to minimize the impact on, on our community Tacoma Park and our Tacoma Park residents? And the result was the restrictions that we implemented temporarily on Ritchie Avenue and Hilltop Road to, to restrict traffic during rush hour until we have time to build out some traffic calming measures that the, the same council approved at that time. Now granted, there's some members of this council that are new, we're not on the council at the time that those were approved. But I want to assure my colleagues that there was a very active public process, a very transparent public process to do that. There were public hearings on it and advertisements in the newspapers, so it, people did get an opportunity to participate in the process. And I understand that it is an inconvenience to many people, not just residents of Ritchie Avenue and the Ossewego and Geneva Avenue. I have many people on Maple Avenue who are concerned and upset about the inconvenience to them. And I know that there has been an impact, both inconvenience-wise on routing, and also there's been traffic volume increases because of the restrictions on, in particular, I think Sherman Avenue, which is, which is a problem. I just ask that this council remember that we did have that process, and, and it is temporary, and that we honor the, the commitments made in the, by the previous council as we move forward. And I think we heard the interim or acting city manager relate what Ms. Braithwaite has told us, which is that, you know, this spring, we're going to be doing the traffic calming measures. It will result in the removal of the restrictions on Ritchie Avenue. And I would also remind the council that part of the same resolution that put those signs up and, and stipulates for them to be removed after the traffic calming measures are put in, there's also a stipulation that there will be then a traffic study of the surrounding roads to see what the impact is of the Sligo Park Hills restrictions and what other changes maybe need to be put in. And that might be, you know, who knows what. Personally, I don't, I don't like restrictions at all, since we all pay the taxes to maintain these roads, to build the roads. But there are certainly circumstances where we have to see what's best for the residents. Thank you.
And I just want to add a point or two, that this council was never happy with the county process that the county used for the restrictions in Sligo Park Hills. We spent a good deal of effort trying to get them to use a different process. Once, once it was obvious that they were going to go forward with their process, we felt that we had to make sure that the city was included in, in looking at what was going to be done, so that there ended up being a joint hearing that took place here. And there were, I don't know, hundreds of people. And nobody was particularly happy with the idea of restrictions. The people in Sligo Park Hills weren't happy with the situation they were facing. Neighbors in Tacoma Park weren't happy with the, with the potential situation here. And the whole process dragged on for, I don't know, two years, as the county went through and tried to kind of, they went through a process of having to define who would get the final vote on it. And that final vote didn't happen until, I believe, July of this year. So that kind of the, the actual going forward with the county process and the implementation didn't reach its fruition until just a couple of months ago. And that is what kind of forced the city's hand in putting in the, the, hopefully, temporary restrictions that we had considered two-plus years ago to go forward. And if the city manager can just remind us of the, I think the, the, if you can, if you can confirm my recollection that the, there was not initially a lot of, a lot of push to get the, to get the traffic calming measures in, but that as time went on, it was almost felt like the, the traffic calming measures needed to go in, no matter what the county did. And the events kind of converged with getting the, the funding and the, and the process to design the restrictions going, even so that there was a lot of work put into it before the, before the county actually got their final implementation.
At the time when the council passed Resolution 201034, there were not plans or money to do the traffic calming installations in the Ritchie neighborhood, Ritchie Citizens Association neighborhood. And Daryl probably can help me a little bit more on the timing, but it, at, at the time, the council was somewhat reluctant to put the money towards that project. But over time, and as different projects went forward on different sidewalk projects, et cetera, this was built in, and we had applied for some grant funds, and we did get grant funds. So it was a little bit later than we thought it would be, but at some point, we went ahead and began the planning process for the traffic installations anyway.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I really appreciate the city staff's recommendation to, to not grant exceptions. If, if, I mean, I am a middle-of-the-road kind of a person, and I'd love to, to work out exceptions. But if we work them out for some folks, you have to work them out for everyone. It can't just be people who are going to the, to a school, or the Public Works Department, or, it needs to be, it needs to be for anybody who wants to be accepted. And, you know, not accepted, but accepted. I, I am in favor of actually having the signs removed at an earlier date, and that would be as soon as possible. I, based on all the comments from all of my, of my constituents, because they are very heavily involved in, in being totally inconvenienced by the signs in, in the morning. And I know I'd like to also say, oh, let's wait and see what the traffic calming devices are, are going to do. But it's also written in this proposal, or this resolution, that if, in fact, the traffic calming devices don't actually stop traffic from going through Ritchie Avenue, then, then the signs are going to go back up. Am I wrong in reading it that way?
Yeah, the, the provision is, and the concern, the concern at the time by the Ritchie Citizens Association was not so much that they didn't expect more cars to eventually go through their neighborhood than were currently going through, but that they did want the safety of the sidewalks and some slower traffic going through the neighborhood. They'd prefer that. Nevertheless, they were concerned that there might be a magnitude of over 200 cars per hour at some point. And, and they didn't think it would get there, and I don't know that I think that it would get to that point, but they were concerned that if it did hit that 200 cars per hour during a peak hour period, that the signs should go back up. So they were willing to accept more cars going through their neighborhood than they currently had, provided it was safer to, to walk through the neighborhood and the cars would go slower. So the way that the resolution is written is that if six months after the signs are down, there's 200 cars per hour in the rush hour, then the signs would go back up. And that's how it's, how it's written.
Right, that's what I thought.
I think a little bit, I remember this a little differently than Councilmember Simmons about the traffic study, because my understanding was that the traffic study would be just in the Ritchie Citizens Association area, not a larger traffic study. That doesn't mean you can't do a larger one, but I think that the provision of this resolution was focused on the Ritchie Citizens Association area.
And if I could, if I can just get clarification that the, that the 200 cars per hour, I heard the same figure from Councilmember. figure from Councilmember Siemens, or was it from you, about the level of cars that were going through Sligo Park Hills, is that where that number came from?
The 200 cars per hour is the triggering amount under the county regs that would say that you could do the traffic restrictions. In fact, what was going through the Sligo Park Hills neighborhood was much higher than that, but that's the triggering number for them.
Okay, that's where that number came from.
It's not our triggering number.
Right, thanks.
Well, I was, I know at the time that this happened, I was heavily involved on that side of the wall, and I, as SS Carroll president, pleaded to not have this happen because I knew what it was going to cause to the Samuel Sprig Carroll Neighborhood Association, and it has. There's several, I've got, you know, you see the letter that Mr. Tronzo penned today that you all have in front of you, and plus Jefferson Street, I mean, there's people all along that side of the hill that are not in favor of leaving the signs up, and some of them were very not in favor of exceptions. I can, I can see that maybe that's not going to happen. I still would like to see the signs come down. I don't think it's, I think the traffic's increased on Sligo Creek Parkway where I drive every day, and what I'd like to see is the state highway administration do something about the light at Sligo Creek and Piney Branch, because it backs the cars up several blocks. That's never been my experience in my whole life, and it is today, it is now on a consistent basis. So I don't know what, I'm going to wait and listen to what everybody else says, but I'm strongly recommending that the signs, that the signs come down. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoover Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a couple of comments. One, I guess, concerns the recommendations that we get back from our police force. I know that they focus very much on enforcement and the ability to enforce things. That's the way they're trained. But in any community, there are also a large percent of people who obey the rules no matter what, even when the rules are unenforceable. Our goal here is to keep traffic down at some level. So if we had something in place that would keep the traffic, whether it's 200 cars per hour or whatever the level is, even if people could still go through the sign, you know, for example, a for local traffic only, even if there were people, not as law-abiding people, who would go through those signs, if most of the people still obeyed the signs, that would achieve our goal and would do it in a more flexible way. And I say that, it's not necessarily just to pick on this issue, but it's come up a few times with regard to speed limits and other enforcement-related issues, and as a council, I hope that we consider those, the vast majority of people who typically will follow the rules, and we use them as our guide in some of these situations, as opposed to worrying about trying to stop the people who are going to be offenders and being able to successfully prosecute them for breaking the rules.
Just a clarification, the recommendation about the not doing the exceptions of the local traffic only is from me, it's not from the police department.
Okay, well, I mean, I've gotten it in writing from the police department as well, on other issues as well as this one. I'm a little unclear of how the Green Hill Day Nursery folks are going to be treated moving forward, and my understanding was that they have made it through so far without being ticketed, and I'm hoping that's going to continue. Okay. And my third comment is, just as a matter of policy, I think in situations like this in the future, if we were, if we were less prescriptive about exactly what was to happen, you know, for example, if we passed an ordinance that said, "We urge or instruct the city to install signs and take other measures that will maintain traffic at a low level," then we, as council, wouldn't find ourselves with the only recourse being council action if we wanted to subsequently adjust things. So it's just, I think it's a lesson in, when we, that line between-
I love it when the council has to make the decision, just, but I appreciate that.
True, but the line between policy and implementation, "We're here for policy," is my understanding, and this is really an implementation issue. We got it, we stepped into the business of, how do you keep traffic below a certain level within a neighborhood? And, you know, we made a, we made a prescriptive rule on that, and now we're having to spend, and the community's having to spend a lot of time dealing with the inflexibility of that choice. And I think, and that's a lesson for many issues, not just traffic restrictions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harper Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say that I do not support these restrictions. I think that since the council has already taken some type of action for traffic restrictions, that these signs should come down as soon as possible. At the very least, we should give a time period, maybe four, six months, to find out, you know, how, if there is a large impact of traffic on these, these different streets. But I think that these restrictions balkanizes the neighborhoods, and I just don't support it.
We've talked about and understand that these signs are to be temporary for the duration until the traffic calming was completed, and we know that the traffic calming project, construction project will be, will occur in the spring, but beyond that, we really don't know. I, I'm curious to understand what the nature is going to be of the traffic calming that the engineers will be proposing. You know, in other words, how elaborate or simple it'll be. Obviously, at one extreme, if it was just speed bumps, those could be put in in no time, seemingly very little time at all. If it's reconfiguring the width of the streets and bump outs and more elaborate stuff, then it could take, or putting in traffic circles and stuff like that, it could take longer. So I, I'm sort of wondering if we can get a little bit more information here from the Department of Public Works, from Ms. Braithwaite, as to when this project she thinks may be able to begin. I realize contracts probably haven't even been let. I'm not even sure whether the engineering's been completed, but the scope, the scale of the project, and maybe once the request to proceed has been issued, how long you would expect the work to take?
Sure. The affected streets are going to be Geneva Avenue, Ritchie Avenue, and Oswego Avenue, so those three roads. The centerpiece is a traffic circle at the intersection of Oswego and Ritchie Avenue. That traffic circle will be bioretention basin. And the curb line on Ritchie Avenue around that circle will be drawn in, so it'll narrow the road and create a kind of a curve, you know, basically support the traffic circle in the middle with accompanying circumference on the outside of the roadway, which will also be a bioretention area. That's kind of the centerpiece. There'll be the addition of sidewalks on Geneva Avenue, the entire length from Hilltop to where it intersects with Ritchie. And there'll be a sidewalk on Oswego Avenue on one side that'll take you from Ritchie to the Hefner Park Community Center. In addition, along the section of Ritchie Avenue between Piney Branch and Oswego Avenue, there'll be a series of bump outs along the curb line, which will restrict parking in those locations, but will also narrow the road. They'll act almost like chicanes, except you won't necessarily have to, you know, move your steering wheel as you drive, it just will be a concrete, literally narrowing of the road where those bump outs occur. I think there's a total of six, or there may be more bump outs that are proposed in that area. And then there was originally a plan to put bike share markings on Ritchie Avenue. I don't know if that has been maintained from the 60% to the 90% drawings. I don't recall what the public sentiment was in regard to that, but there are quite a lot of bikes that travel, believe it or not, up Ritchie and use that as a passway through to Sligo Creek Parkway. And I believe that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
How long is it?
In terms of construction, we're looking at a four-to-six week construction period. We will be using our indefinite quantities contractor. We have a, you know, construction contractor that we use for most sidewalk and roadway and curb line projects, so we have let them know that we've got this project, as well as a couple others queued up, and anticipate early spring construction. This will be a priority project for us, notwithstanding the issue that's in front of you right now, but also because we were able to secure Maryland Water Quality Funding Grant for a significant portion of this project, and there's a requirement to have it completed by June in order to meet the funding requirement.
Early spring, from my experience in working with you, generally means like March 1st?
March, mhm, yeah.
Okay. I'm familiar with the circle with the bioretention. You put one of those in my ward, which has worked pretty successfully, except for the one night, one tractor trailer carrying concrete blocks decided to use the traffic circle as a U-turn, managed to divide the circle in half. And so although, I'm familiar with all the things that you're talking about. So, okay, that sort of answers, answers my question. Thank you very much. It gives us some reality context here. The other thing, I, I'm a little bit undecided as to whether I would vote to support bringing the signs down right now or not, but I am decided about permanent no-turn restrictions in the event, notwithstanding the resolution that was passed by the previous city council, because I think regardless of the volume of traffic that might ensue after this traffic calming is done, when we start putting up no-turn restrictions, we start, we're setting, we're setting precedence. And I just am inclined to think that that's just not something that we ought to be doing with our public roads. Temporary restrictions for something like this may be tolerable, and they are more tolerable because you do know that they are temporary, and they are, you're not going to have to put up with this for forever. But when things become permanent, like they could theoretically become based on the terms of our resolution we passed in the last city council, which I sat on, I just worry, as again, as I said, about setting precedent, because other neighborhoods, including mine, will want the same thing, given where, a few years ago, Ward 6, the New Hampshire Garden Civic Association enlisted the city staff to look at traffic calming. They hired a traffic engineer to do a study and put people at both ends of Wildwood Drive and Glenside Drive in Ward 6, as they went from Carroll Avenue in the north till they entered New Hampshire Avenue in the southern end of the ward down near Sligo Creek Parkway, wrote down license plates and see who went through and who started at one end and didn't come out the other end, which was a way of defining what actually was cut through traffic. They also did a study of traffic volumes, all the, on all the major entry points into that ward. One of the things that the residents strongly wanted was to keep people who were using New Hampshire Avenue from turning into Glenside, where Erskine comes in on the west, on the east, going up Glenside and using Glenside as a cut through to get to Carroll Avenue. And it was basically decided that this was not a really a practical solution. First of all, it would, the enforcement of it would be extremely difficult, and some people in the community were just opposed to the idea in principle, on the basis that these are public streets and they ought to be able to be used by the public regularly. And so we didn't opt for any turning restrictions at any of the entry points into our community. I wish that they, we could have had them, as a person who lives on one of those streets and sees car volumes at certain times of the day at the rush hour, far over the rate of 200 cars per hour. They come through there, you know, 10, 15 cars a minute during, during the evening rush hour. It's particularly difficult at this time of year when it's 5:30, it's pitch dark out. So I'm just going to say that if we, it seems to me logic, logic would follow that if we put park, start installing these kind of permanent parking restrictions, I mean, turning restrictions, that residents in my ward are going to want the same thing, and we ought to be prepared to deal with that fact, to use the term that was just, just used here a minute ago, start to create a balkanization of our, of our city, as Councilmember Smith just expressed, which I happen to think is a real possibility. So I, that's where my thinking lies at the present time.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, first of all, Councilmember Schults, I would like to point out that the precedent has been set and has been long-term set, but I don't think we need to go into all the other traffic restrictions that are in place in the city at this point in time, but I tend to agree with you that it's something we should look at in the future of how do we, as a city, want to deal with the traffic situations and whether traffic restrictions are appropriate, permanent traffic restrictions are appropriate. But I want to thank Councilmember Daniels Cohen for bringing up Mr. Tronzo's letter. That's actually from Mr. Tronzo and Mr. Goodyear, who both live on Sherman Avenue, and I would just like to highlight what he'll highlight, or what they highlighted in their letter. It says, "We assume the temporary signs will be replaced with more permanent traffic calming measures. Therefore, the increased traffic currently being diverted to Sherman Avenue will not be cured with the removal of the temporary signs." Okay, so what they are actually asking this council to do is to begin a traffic study to look at traffic patterns in and around the area, to see what are the best measures for us to take to try to make our neighborhoods safe and the quality of life decent, and I would certainly support that. I don't know that today's the right day to start that, but I think that when the temporary traffic restrictions on Ritchie have been taken down, I certainly think that a traffic study broader than just Ritchie Avenue would be appropriate, and this council, or whatever council's sitting here at that point in time, may decide that that traffic study should be citywide to see, you know, as Councilmember Schults points out, this is not something that's unique to, you know, one street or one neighborhood. It's something that, we live in an urban area, and we have a lot of traffic around us. I remember 1998, I think it was, I read a newspaper article that talked about, you know, where Tacoma Park is like in the eye of a hurricane. There's a lot going on around us, and we try to maintain our image as a, as a small town, but it's very difficult when you live in a big megalopolis. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, just, this is a comment, I'm still wanting them removed, but I just want to say it's been really remarkable about, with respect, to the respect that's been shown by all the neighborhoods on this particular issue. I think each neighborhood that's involved, both the Ritchie Citizens' Association, SS Carroll, and all the people on the other hill have, understand each other's problems and issues, and have, have been very cordial to one another about the issue. We did just get Mr. Tronzo and Jeffrey and Herman's letter today, and Suzanne and I are going to actually sit down pretty quickly and chat about what the possibilities are, because there's some excellent suggestions, and I agree that, and I think it's really stated in here, that this may be something, we need a traffic study for the whole city. There's some possibilities of making some streets one-way that might slow, slow traffic down, up and down hills and things like that, to make it a little bit easier to get around. I am shockingly in favor of actually putting up 15 mile-an-hour speed limit signs all around the city. I probably may be strangled when I leave tonight, but that's, that's how I'd like to see it. I don't know why anybody has to go much faster than that through this area. It's highly congested, it has lots of children and lots of cars, and- It's, uh, it's highly congested, it has lots of children and lots of cars and you don't need to go fast to get from X to Y, you just need to, to be steady as she goes, so to speak. But I, I commend everyone for their remarkable and excellent respect for each other on the issue.
And I'll just add a comment or two addressing some of the points that have been made. On your last point about the speed limit, Councilmember Daniels Cohen, I know that we've had some discussions in the past about that. And people are surprised when they hear that the state law is that when it's, when it's not posted otherwise, the speed limit is always 30.
30 miles an hour.
And people have assumed that it's 25. Where it is 25, it's because it's posted 25. And that means that on places like Carroll Avenue where it's posted 25, it's 25. And on the side streets where it's not posted, it's 30.
30, I know.
And we've also been advised that it's highly unlikely that we would get the ability to post signs much lower than, I don't know, I'll say 25 or 20, but below that, it's really difficult to go. People have been referring to other restrictions around town, and I'll just take a very short amount of time to share my recollection of the process that was used with the turn restriction coming off of Ethan Allen into Manor Circle. That was probably, it was more than 20 years ago.
Oh, was it?
It wasn't. Well, I wasn't on the council. I, I don't think.
I think you might have been.
Maybe I was just on it, but I know, I, I know I took part in it.
Yeah.
And that was a, uh, there was a fairly large-scale traffic study done with consultants, John somebody, and a lot of things were looked at. There were a lot of suggestions for one-way of various streets. Uh, I don't know what you call them, but where you, you get the kind of the double access where you, you come down to a, a four-way intersection, you can turn one-way but not go straight through, that you see in Northwest DC over by Wisconsin Avenue a good bit.
Bethesda.
A lot of things were brought up. It was about a two-year process, I think. And what resulted from it was one thing, one permanent thing, which was that single-turn restriction from Ethan Allen to Manor Circle. And it was mainly because that was the starting point for a whole bunch of other traffic issues flushing all through the SS Carroll neighborhood with cars continuing down the various streets between Carroll and Maple and proceeding on up Ritchie and other ways to get through in rush hour when Tacoma Junction was gridlocked. Sound familiar?
Mm-hmm.
So I think that various councils have been loath to do permanent restrictions because we've recognized that if you, if you do one, that causes that traffic that can't go there anymore to go somewhere else and you're just moving the problem to adjacent streets. So I think it's generally been for safety of neighborhood residents when there's a particularly aggravating situation. And that was the case with Manor Circle because cars were just flying through there and schoolchildren were getting hit waiting for the bus. So I think that that was some of the same impetus for what the people in Sligo Park Hills were concerned about. Again, a reminder that we in the city didn't particularly like their process for deciding it and the way that they went about it, but in the end, we were left to deal with the, the potential spillover from their restrictions. And I thought that the temporary nature of the ones and the limited nature of the ones that were proposed and now have been temporarily implemented for going through the Ritchie Citizens Association area were reasonable and temporary. And I think that there, as, as we implemented them, we talked about that there were, that they weren't hard and fast, you shall not come through here, period, during rush hour. It was a turn restriction from a single direction, at least the one at Maple and Ritchie, so that it is possible to reach it through various strategies. And I think as a temporary measure, until the traffic calming measures go in with the recognition that it is a, that it's possible to still go through there, is a, is a reasonable way to go. It's not going to be too many more months. And much as I have a lot of sympathy for people whose ways of getting where they need to in rush hour is affected, I've heard people say it adds 10 minutes to their commute. I have to believe that's true. Excuse me. But I hope the temporary nature of it means that we will quickly get to a point where we can make the changes that are proposed and that they'll be effective and that we're not doing something permanent here. And I agree with the sentiments about doing permanent changes, though I don't think it's the right way to go. If we need to do a wider-scale traffic study, I think that's something that we'll need to do, but I would certainly approach it with the attitude that restrictions are not a good idea. But I feel like just taking the restrictions off now with the flexibility that the Ritchie Citizens Association residents have shown and the, the way that this has all kind of happened to them with some forces beyond all of our control is, is a, is a process that we should respect and we shouldn't just say, "Well, tough, a lot of your neighbors don't like it," and take them out. So much as I would like to be able to say, "Sure, take them out. No matter what we do, they're going to be unhappy people." And I think the responsible thing to do is to follow through with where we are and get the calming measures in place as soon, as quickly as possible and work around it for a couple more months.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Is it possible to use some Jersey wall and make a temporary circle as a calming? Nope, not possible. I'm just thinking outside the box here. All right?
I was wondering where those Jersey barriers were going to go.
Just, just thinking outside the box. We can just borrow them from the State Highway Administration, just to put that circle in there, to, to slow everybody down. I'm still wanting to take the signs down.
Um, I, I did say that we would like to take public comment.
Yes.
On this item, and I think this is an appropriate point to do that. So anybody who is here for this item who would like to speak, we welcome your comments. And please identify yourself and please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Giuseppe Chino and I live at, in the 300 block of Hilltop Road. First, I want to thank the mayor for your reasoned comments as always. As we discussed the Ritchie Avenue traffic restrictions, I want to make two preliminary comments, and I apologize if these were written before this discussion. First, I've heard the pejorative gated community used at times. If the intended result was a gated community, the community's request would have been to close the street. Oh, wait, that's what we did in Wards Two and Three surrounding Manor Circle and Grant Avenue. Second, I've heard that fellow residents of Tacoma Park believe that they have paid for public roads and that those roads should be available for all to use at all times of the day. As a Tacoma Park resident that pays taxes, I agree. But you see, that precedent has already been set and I can't turn right onto Jackson Avenue from 410 during morning rush hour. Instead of these measures, what the community in Ward Five and in Ward, excuse me, Ward Four and in Ward Five where I reside did request, and the city council agreed to, was a compromise. That compromise in Resolution 201034 concluded that the installation of pedestrian safety and traffic calming measures is the best long-term solution. Further, the compromise was that the city would post rush hour traffic restrictions until that solution was implemented. I respect the traffic controls at Jackson, Manor Circle, along with other stop signs, speed limits and traffic lights. I respect the traffic restrictions on Ritchie and the rest of Tacoma Park should as well. In short, the community has made a reasonable request and the council agreed. The council needs to keep its part of the bargain and retain the signage until it delivers on the promised installation of pedestrian safety and traffic calming measures. Please allow me an opportunity to return in a few short months in the spring when construction is complete and award gold stars to the council for keeping its promises. If the council wants to remove these restrictions now, then remove those in the other wards too. If the council wants extra gold stars, please work with the county to have them offer real, effective traffic calming options as we are planning for Ritchie to the city and county residents of Sligo Park Hills. Don't forget, Sligo Park Hills also includes part of the city. Last, there has been a request to provide an interim exception from the traffic restrictions to the Green Hill Child Development Center. If the considerations given to date by the Traffic Control Officers of the Tacoma Park Police Department are insufficient, the council should support and immediately implement said exemption to support this vital community resource directly impacted by restrictions at drop-off and pickup times. That's an important distinction of that particular facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sean Tipton. I live on Fremont Avenue. I want to thank you for your endurance this evening. I know it's been a long night and a long year. I think many of the reasons have been articulated already, many, by, by many of you. I think Councilmember Seaman said a couple important things. One was anticipatory, and I think that was where you got yourselves into trouble. I think you anticipated what was going to happen when the restrictions got lifted on Hilltop, and you didn't take the time to get the data that you needed to make a good decision. So I would ask you to lift the restrictions immediately and at the very least amend the current resolution to make sure that it was, that the, would not become a permanent restriction. Now, another point I wanted to make was that some of this traffic, well, all of the traffic goes somewhere, and wherever it goes, it annoys the people that it goes to. So now the people on Ritchie are annoyed because the traffic came from Hilltop. So wherever it goes is going to annoy those people. I would love to close my streets. Unfortunately, streets are designed to get people from one place to another. Some of the traffic in this restriction is going to find itself on Maple Avenue. In fact, perhaps to make, to use the strategy the mayor just offered in terms of avoiding making an illegal turn. So Maple Avenue is used by children, hundreds of children every day, and most of the time during school hours, you have crossing guards, but not always. They have a lot of great activities in this building and in the library and in the pool. I happen to be the parent of a child who was struck by a car on Maple Avenue in a crosswalk, crossing at Lincoln after being to swim practice, so I have some strong objections to putting more traffic on Maple Avenue. So again, I would ask you to lift the restriction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Demore, Maple Avenue, Ward Five. I've spent a lot of time with the traffic studies and a lot of these issues, kind of helping our neighborhood, which is Maple Erie connected neighborhood. The fundamental that I hear tonight that's missing is a redo on the traffic study that led to the approval of the closures. Okay? The traffic study in its results said that of all the cars going through the to-be-closed streets, and they did not count Ritchie, they only counted Sligo Park Hills in the count that they did, they counted 23 cars during the whole rush hour going to each of the two intersections at Piney Branch and Philadelphia, Piney Branch and Sligo, at one of the rush hours, and 50 cars at each of those intersections the other rush hour. They ignored in their count on impact on the traffic, 80% of the cars they monitored going through the affected neighborhood. The traffic engineer explained, "We don't have to count all the cars being diverted if they originate within three-quarters of a mile of the affected intersection." No reason for that, just a rule. And they only monitored one intersection at, whatever, Park Valley and Sligo Parkway. So the one thing in addition to all the things you're talking about, a study of Tacoma Park, et cetera, is the county did a study that justified and supported the result with extraordinarily weak and flawed analysis. I think the town has every, the city has every right to request, require a true study of the impact on those intersections. At the time the study came out, it said those intersections were rated D or F, and those are a couple of years old. The impact of the closure was de minimis because they didn't count 80% of the diverted cars. So when you talk about 200 cars an hour during rush hours and the most they counted was 100-car impact during a whole rush hour, I kept saying throughout all the hearings, "You can't have it both ways. It can't be too many cars going through and no cars being diverted." So the whole purpose of the traffic study was to evaluate the likelihood of impact on the two primary ingress and egress points for my neighborhood, which is I've got to come through Piney Branch and Sligo Creek Parkway or Piney Branch and Philadelphia. Those are the two intersections they focus on. They said no discernible impact. So I think it's very much in our interest to demand a redo on that, and I think that will come up with a different result properly conducted.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much. Dawn Reeves, Ward Six. I live on Glen Side Drive. I've spoke to you before. I'm a parent of a student who attends the Green Hill Daycare Center, and I guess I'm confused about what the situation is. We had a meeting at the school a couple weeks ago where Officer Smith told us that the Tacoma Park Police Chief had decided informally that parents taking and picking up their students and going against the restrictions would not receive a ticket, that we could possibly be pulled over, but that the chief had determined that stickers weren't necessary. One of the parents designed a window sticker just for the parents to have, just so it's easy identification for the officer. If this plan stays in place, I'm unclear whether that informal agreement still stands or not. I think that I would appreciate if you would consider stickers. I don't think that it would be starting a new precedent since the city already provides parking stickers that allow exceptions to parking restrictions. And in addition to the risk of having a ticket, I and some of the other parents have had run-ins with neighborhood vigilantes that stand at the bottom of Geneva and step out in front of your moving car and give you a signal like this telling you to turn around. They're putting me in danger, my child in danger, and themselves in danger. So it's not just an informal agreement between the school and the, the city police department. There's other issues that are going on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of Council, Joe Edgell, 1001 Elm Avenue. While in general, these kind of restrictions I find troublesome, we have a tremendous amount of traffic from New Hampshire to Sligo Creek, and it'd be great if you could block off our street too, because I'd love to, to not have all of the cut-through traffic, and I suspect the numbers would be very similar. I think the comments that several council members made, that there are going to be lots of neighborhoods asking for similar restrictions, is true because we're going to be right here asking for similar restrictions in our neighborhood. But what I thought I'd raise to you is maybe two unintended consequences, or at least one unintended consequence and one potentially unthought-out impact of the restrictions. First, when you shut traffic from a through route that's not blocked to a through route that is blocked, you actually increase the negative environmental impacts. Those vehicles, when they're stuck in traffic idling, create a lot of pollution, and that pollution has measurable and serious human health impacts on people. So while you're protecting the theoretical child who might possibly be hit, and I challenge you to produce some statistics to show that there have been children hit on this street, you actually are harming people with actual measurable human health impact data in other areas where these cars are being shunted to. So please think about the secondary impacts of these decisions, the restrictions that you've put in place here and in other streets. And the last thing I wanted to mention in my time remaining is that right now, it doesn't allow any traffic of any type, motorized or un-motorized. And as the Public Works Director noted, a lot of bicycles like to use this as a through route, but that's now illegal and they deserve to be ticketed too. And as a cyclist trying to get from point A to point B who'd prefer not to ride on the clogged streets where his life is in danger, I'd ask you, if you think of no other exception, to at least make an exception for bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Wayne Willis. I live at 121 Ritchie Avenue. I stood here two and a half years ago talking about the same issue, basically asking you all to protect the safety of the many children and elderly people who live on Ritchie Avenue. I'm not going to go through the whole history. You've already heard, heard what happened. Want to thank the mayor and the members of the city council who stepped up at that time and passed the traffic calming resolution in 2010. We really appreciate the thoughtful approach they took, and we think there was a lot of compromise on both sides at that time, and we really appreciate the way that, that all So, so as we said, the council passed the resolution installing the signs and authorizing traffic calming measures on Ritchie as part of a multi-year process. After much discussion and debate, the resolution was a logical and necessary result of the county's decision to impose traffic restrictions in Sligo Park Hills. So what brings us here tonight? Where, well, as we see it, the only problem is we haven't gotten the traffic calming measures that were, that were promised two and a half years ago. As we recall it, the, the traffic calming was supposed to have been installed within nine months after the resolution. Had that actually occurred, they would have, we would have had the traffic calming in place even before, even before the county's policy went into place, even before the county's signs went up. So we wouldn't be here. I guess in short, we really think it's irresponsible for the, for the council to even consider reopening this after, after two years. I mean, the central issue here is really one of convenience versus safety. And we think the, the council came down on the side of safety two and a half years ago. There's no reason why they should come down on this side of convenience now. I have a small child. I live on Ritchie Avenue. We've already seen traffic increase even with the signs, just because of the, the restrictions in Sligo Park Hills. It's been said many times tonight, there are, there are, there are tons of traffic restrictions around town right now. We're not asking to have any of those removed. Are they inconvenient for us at times? Absolutely, absolutely. But we believe they're there for a good reason. We don't think that those traffic restrictions in Ward 3 or Ward 2 should be reversed. We just live with it. And unlike those, ours are temporary. All we've asked for, I'm sorry, I'm going to continue. All we've asked for is a temporary safety for our children while these traffic calming measures are put in place, which were promised some time ago. We do not support removing the traffic calming measures until those, or the, the signs, until those measures are in place. And with regard to Green Hill Daycare, I just wanted to say, living on Ritchie Avenue, I see those children with the, with the daycare counselors walking up and down that street, which actually the parents probably don't get to see this, and it's, I worry about them because there's a whole lot of traffic going through there, and at times coming around the corner that I live on, people are going very fast, and they're pushing those big carts full of kids. We need, we need the wider sidewalks. We need the bumpouts. We need to slow the traffic down, both for the residents who live on Ritchie Avenue and for those schoolkids who are down there. And are, and they also use Heffner Park, by the way.
Thanks. Can you wrap it up?
Which, I'm almost done. We just ask our fellow residents of Tacoma Park to be patient, let the process continue as planned, knowing the signs are going to come down once the traffic calming measures are in place. And we ask the city council keep its word and follow through with its promises. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Duchesne, 125 Sherman. I have a front row seat every day for the increased traffic coming down Sherman Avenue, as Councilmember Seaman so adequately pointed out. This time of year, with increased weather leaves on the road, the amount of cars sliding into Maple has increased. I think, as many people have pointed out, everybody's street's being impacted by this. I think the wider traffic study is the appropriate measure. Limiting turns on certain streets and then having tickets issued by the limited law enforcement we have seems like a misuse of resources. I think that perhaps local-only signs would be followed by the law-abiding citizens, as Councilmember Mayle pointed out, but having our few officers standing on corners issuing citations is a complete neglect of the actual crime problems that exist in our city. So again, I think as this rolls out, seriously consider a wide-ranging traffic study and the impact it's having across all of our streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, Tracy Burke, Jefferson Avenue. I've spoken to you a few times over the last month, so let me try to change my story a little bit. Today, I really am asking you to take them down. A mistake was made. What exactly is a cut-through street? Is Sherman a cut-through street? But Lincoln's not. They both go between the same two arteries. If every cut-through street in Tacoma Park, that we counted 200 cars going up and down, I think you'd have a much more serious problem. Everybody would want their street closed off. I have a wet basement. Does anybody here have a wet basement? I have a sump pump that I, you know, when it's going to rain, I'm down there making sure that it's going to go off. The easiest thing for me to do is run that out the side of the basement wall into my driveway. Oops! It goes right into my neighbor's basement, right across the driveway, right into his window. So I don't do that. It wouldn't solve the problem. That's exactly, exactly what you're doing here. Traffic in Tacoma Park is a big deal. Moving it from one little cut-through street to another cut-through street. I have used Sherman in part of my experimentation. I have made U-turns. I've cut through the parking lots of the apartment buildings. None of that makes any sense. That's silly. I need to be like water and follow the easiest way. And that's what traffic is going to do. I've seen those little Green Hill kids, and they're adorable. And sometimes when I would pick my kids up at the middle school, we would stop and everybody would wave. But I think when you make a ruling that immediately requires exceptions to that rule, the day the rule is put into place, you have to make exceptions, there's a basic problem with the way that rule is. This was a preemptive, and I feel a little bit aggressive, strike against the rest of the neighborhood. So I agree with the statements about how it is going to separate and divide Tacoma Park, as each little clustered neighborhood tries to protect their own water flow. So I have a fire extinguisher in my kitchen, just in case I have a fire. It's there. I'm prepared. I haven't had to use it yet, and I don't spray it around the kitchen just to make sure. So the fact that those restrictions went up without knowing the result of the closures on Hilltop and Sligo Hills, it just didn't make any sense. So I urge you to take those down now. The people on Ritchie are going to make sure you get those traffic calming measures up. I guarantee it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are these new lights?
I put a new one up.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Seaman's and then Councilmember Daniels' come.
Mine's not a new light.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Seaman's.
I think I've heard general agreement here tonight that, you know, a traffic study would be valuable, not just for this neighborhood, but for all neighborhoods. This is an issue that we've heard from many residents, not just because of the traffic restrictions that were put in Sligo Park Hills. And I would just like to ask the mayor to schedule a time that we can, on the agenda, when we can discuss our desires or not for a, for a evaluation of traffic through the city.
Maybe something that you want to add to the budget discussion in January?
I think that's probably appropriate. Thank you.
I've heard some stated opinions on where people want to go tonight. I haven't necessarily heard the majority say where we want to go. Are there other comments clarifying any desires?
Yeah, I would just like to say that we, we stand by our previous commitment and, you know, tough it out for the next couple of months. And I'll also ask us the acting city manager to expedite the traffic calming measures, implementation of traffic calming measures on Ritchie Avenue, so that we can get this over with as quickly as possible.
I know there is some, some limited agreement with that, with that position, but I know that there's a number of people who don't want to go that route.
Well, we'd like to take a straw, straw vote.
Well, Councilmember Schultz.
I, I think we ought to be careful when we say, oh, it's just a matter of a couple of months.
It's not going to be that.
Couple of months gets us to the end of January. Construction's not going to start until March 1st, if even then, depending on the weather. Darryl Braithwaite explained it's going to take a minimum of four to six weeks. Contractors oft, sometimes take a little longer than we expect, so round that up to two months. You're really talking to the end of May, which is a half a year from now.
Yes.
Well, taken. I'll say for the next six months.
Yes.
Yeah. Just, just let's be, you know, let's all, just want to be, let us be clear what, what we're up against here, whether you're for this thing or not. That's all I just wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a new one.
And I'll say that depending on what we decide we want to do tonight, if it's an action that requires changing the resolution that we had, we would need to do that in January.
It's a new light.
Oh, it is a new, okay. Councilmember Daniels.
We never know.
It's a new light.
I'm, I'm underlining what Councilmember Schultz said. As I back out how long it's going to take, I, I'm, you know, realistically, to get all the traffic calming measures in as speedily as our Public Works Department contractors work, it's at least May. So it's, it's a half, it's a half a year away. I, I'd like to ask for people's patience, but what I'm really going to ask for is we have the signs removed as quickly as possible, and I'm going to say by December the 9th. And if I have to make that as a motion, that's, so be it.
Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to say that I support Councilmember Daniel Cohen's request that we remove the signs immediately.
I guess at this point, I'll ask for a show of hands about people who want to remove the signs immediately. That's three. A show of hands, people who don't want to remove them immediately. That's four. Okay. Is there any further discussion about, any, I'll say, any further nuance in terms of the vote of four, in terms of any additional comments anybody wants to make? Councilmember Grines.
Yes, regarding nuance, my reading of the resolution that was passed in 2010 says that the city is on schedule, that the resolution, the, the resolved clauses are introduced by if the Sligo Park Hills access restriction signs are approved, then we get to the clause number five, I'm sorry, number four, the traffic calming and so on be done within nine months. The traffic calming measures are preclude, are, what's the word I want? Conditioned on the moving forward with the Sligo Park Hills restrictions. Therefore, doing it within nine months of the effective date, which was in July, which puts us at the, and it puts us in May, that we are on schedule according to 2010 resolution. I'll add that there's a judicial principle called stare decisis, which says that a court, well, we're not a court, we're a legislative body, will in general respect the decisions made by its predecessors. I respect the decision made by the 2010 council, which involved even more involved and long and deliberations than we've undergone in the last few months, with the views expressed by many more people than even we've heard in the last few weeks. Therefore, I'm with Councilmember Seaman's in respecting the 2010 council's deliberations and decision, and once again, note that we are on schedule according to what the council directed in 2010. Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Okay. Thank you all. I appreciate your comments, and we'll try and get this taken care of as quickly as possible. And we will have a discussion in the, in our budget discussions in January about traffic studies, and we will take into account comments we've heard about permanent restrictions and effects on neighborhoods. We will move to our next item, which is the discussion of alternative redistricting proposals. We had the various proposals come from the redistricting test force. We were last, the last one, I think, was Option C. Councilmember Seaman's and I put our heads together to try and come up with a refinement of that. We, we came up with a proposal, then there was a further refinement after, I believe, Councilmember Seaman's and Councilmember Smith looked at that. I came up, I ran the numbers on those two, and then I guess after I handed it to the city clerk, you came up with a question about one of the pieces that we did. And that question came up late in the week, and I was the one who had the numbers, and I was in California, and the numbers were here. So I didn't get to look at it, and Councilmember Seaman's didn't get to look at it. So we don't have it in front of us tonight, but I'll tell you what it is and what the issue is.
I thought I did bring copies of just the base map.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful.
Help.
This is the existing base map, right?
What it, what we did was we shifted, you'll follow along and correct me if I missed something.
Okay.
We shifted the parts of Jefferson, Carroll, and Lincoln, one side of Lincoln, kind of right in the middle of the map there, that has the blocks that say 75 and 167. Those blocks were split. No, those blocks were not split. Well, no, the second, the second block was split.
Do you need this?
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Just use the arrows to go.
Yeah.
This is, this map that you just gave us is the as-is right now.
Yes.
We have that map because maybe I can plug it into the printer.
Right. What we really want to start with is the Option C map.
Right.
I can pull it up on this, and we can plug it in. Is that what you want?
If you can do that, that would be good. If you can do that, that would be good.
He's already got one plugged in over here, if you know where it is.
I'm looking. Okay, I have, I know that's options tables. Is it online somewhere?
Yeah, Tim, if you look at, I think it was October 15, the October 15th agenda item, it should have the PDF.
If he does that, so if you can give me that for a second, I can start through the explanation. Sorry, I didn't have mine with me, but I'm just back. No, no, that's fine. So...
That should be green. You guys are talking about taking this one over here moving to Ward 5 and leaving all this.
The way it is.
We'll take another 60 seconds to try and pull this up. And then I'll go through the explanation, whether it's up or not.
Only right here, his lane.
Yeah.
If you remember that option C left us with some...
In here, okay. I'm sorry.
So, option C left us with some pieces of the current Ward 3 that were shifted to Ward 5. And it basically ran the line down the middle of Lincoln Avenue.
Correct.
So, that one side of Lincoln Avenue was on in Ward 3, and one side was in Ward 5, and everything beyond that Lincoln Avenue. So, therefore, Carroll, Jefferson, and Fremont was in Ward 5. What this did was it moved those pieces that had gone from Ward 3 to Ward 5 back into Ward 3.
Is that the option C now?
Option C.
And your entourage, the 77, that's the 47, is okay to move into Ward?
Well, you guys are playing with maps here. Just part of the goal for this discussion is if you're, if you are pretty comfortable with the description that you give, we will double-check the numbers, making sure that we use the correct version of numbers, and then we can advertise it in the January issue of the newsletter so that people have something in mind to be able to testify on it in the, for the January public hearing.
And if we come up with one option, two options, whatever, that we'll advertise those. And we need to, we need to decide that now so that it can go in because the newsletter comes out before we meet again.
I think the key thing is that we do want to be able to advertise it in January. I think we're very close on the numbers, and we can, we can come up with whatever tweaking it's needed to finalize the numbers for that, for that announcement. As long as our colleagues trust us to...
There we go, there we go. Got it, right there. Oh, I just did blow it up. So, the, if you look at the, if you look at the bottom of the blue Ward 5 section, right in the center of the map, that Ward 3, Ward 5 line moves back to where it is on the map that you've got the paper copy of, the existing, back down to kind of like Sligo Creek. Then, the next piece that changes is the 47s, 7777 Maple Avenue, moves from Ward 4 to Ward 5. And then the other, the other thing that happens, the 47s is that, is right next to the number 4 in Ward 4.
Right under the cursor.
Oh, somebody's moving the cursor. Who, you? Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. And then the other change is if you go to Lee Avenue in the green of Ward 4, where it moves up into the pink of Ward 3, you can see how the green comes up Lee Avenue most of the way on the, I'll call it the top side of Lee Avenue. What this would do is add, if you look on the bottom side of Lee Avenue, one, two, three buildings between where the Ward line is and Hancock.
It's hard to tell on the map how many buildings there are, but it, basically, you're talking about making that side of, moving that side of Lee Avenue to Ward 4, all the way up to and including the apartment buildings on condominium on the corner of Lee Avenue, and actually run around the corner onto Hancock.
It's, so it's, it's making...
It looks like three buildings there. I'm not going to tell you how many there are.
I think it is.
It is three buildings.
Yes. And it, so it makes the, all of the buildings on that block of Lee Avenue going Ward 4, it's currently just one side.
Correct.
And that was the first version. Then, the second version was what happened if you, now if you scroll back up the screen. If the, if Mississippi Avenue moves back into Ward 4 where it was for a long time before it moved to Ward 5.
Which kind of makes sense because it is more contiguous with...
It's on the Ward 4 side of Sligo Creek.
These two, right. These two are on Hilltop. And again, I would think they stay with the neighborhood that they're closest to, but I think we need to not be specific tonight because it's going to depend somewhat on the numbers as we work these things.
And, and the numbers that we came up with, and there was a question on one of the numbers, the numbers that we came up with, and ended up with, after all of those changes, ended up with a much smaller spread among the wards. So, whatever it was, I don't know if that's here. If the, I want to say, my recollection is that if the spread between the high and the low was about seven point something percent, it became five point something percent.
There's the tiniest error on this map, too.
Yeah, we, yes.
You know that error, right? 7611 belongs in Ward 4.
Yeah.
But the statistics, the numbers we've been working with were correct.
Yeah. So, the idea was to keep neighborhood associations together, split blocks where necessary. We kind of undid some where the line ran down the middle of the street, so you had neighbors on one side in one ward, and one side in the other. And it kind of, one of the, one of the things that's happened over the, a number of the last redistrictings is that Ward 4 has kind of marched up Lee Avenue, and this kind of continues that march, and puts both sides of that street together. So, that was the, that was the thinking behind it, that was the results. And if that one number that there's a question on is correct, it gets us a lot closer to the, to the smaller spread that we wanted. If it's not correct, we'll have to see what it does to the numbers, and whether either one of those two options works. Councilmember Mail.
I'm just, we would also have to check when we bring this back as a full agenda item, that it doesn't dramatically affect the ethnic racial balance within the wards. Is that correct? Do we have to have the, do we have to look at diversity and...
We would look at it as best we can. You know, the difficulty when you have the split blocks is you can't know.
Our sense was it didn't change it much, but...
Mississippi, in your, I didn't know if this, in your iteration, I guess that's a good word, Mississippi goes to, goes back into Ward 4, all of Mississippi, is that correct?
Yes, Mississippi and...
And possibly Hilltop.
And, 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 and in talking about Mississippi, you can kind of see this little curve that's L-1 Court.
Okay.
To the left of the cursor.
7777 goes to Ward 5. Okay. The 47.
So, we'll have to get back the final confirmation on that, but assuming that those numbers work, are those things that you want to go with, or you want to put, you know, we know we have option C. Do you want to go with option C, option D, option E, depending on the numbers? Do you want to go with option D and E? Do you like E if the numbers work? You want, you know, do you want to go with 1, 2, or 3?
Stop, stop, you're confusing me. Okay, let's just back up. I think what we did was we said before that this option was close to what we wanted to see. There were a few things that we wanted to try to change. You and I have sat down and put together a proposal for this, for our colleagues, and I would like to just narrow this down to that one proposal, and, and see if this is comfortable, and if people are comfortable with this, and we'll go ahead with this, and do whatever minor adjustments we have to do to get the announcement in the January newsletter.
Councilmember Schultz.
Can you cross over, see where we stand with Ward 6? Because I know Ward 6 has grown.
This, this map still has the error on it, the one side of New Hampshire. This area would, of course, remain in Ward 2, so that, that has a mistake. But it would incorporate this area back into Ward 6.
All the way up to the Sunoco Station at the point of New Hampshire Avenue and East West Highway. That I'm happy with. That's, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, well, it would be nice to see a corrected map here soon that gets that little knob put back where it belongs.
And also the other error that Councilmember Daniels Cohen pointed out.
And I didn't hear that one. I'm assuming that's the one that we talked about?
The 7611 is in Ward 4.
Yes, yes, right.
If I can make a suggestion, if you are mostly happy with the final version, whatever that is, E, I mean, my preference would be to have one map only in for the advertisement. You guys can make changes when you make your, after the public hearing, and you adopt a final map. But it's, I think that it would be most useful for a resident to just see one map.
Yes.
It would be most useful for us to...
It would be most, it would even be better for us.
So, option E has the most tweaks that kind of followed the criteria that we were trying to use.
All right, option E moves, moves Lee Avenue into Ward 4, Mississippi and some of Hilltop back into Ward 4, 777 into Ward 5, and it does something to Ward 6, correct? Or not? Nothing? It stays the same? All right.
Well, the same as in C.
In C, all right.
And it moves the...
Well, and the major part, sorry, Jefferson and Lincoln back into Ward 3, sorry.
Yes. Councilmember Schultz.
I would say, though, when you're advertising, wouldn't it be a good idea to have a, for comparison purposes, the existing, the base map that we have?
Yes, we would, we would certainly want to compare it to the existing.
So, you have two maps, the existing and what we're being proposed. Okay, all right. I think that's good, because otherwise, a lot of people don't know which ward they live in to start with.
Yeah, we would have the street list also, so that you'd see your street, and you would say, oh, I'm moving from da-da-da, or I'm staying in the same ward. You'd be able to see that comparison.
So, are people happy with the final iteration, option E, assuming that that has the numbers that work?
Absolutely.
I'm not seeing any disagreement.
I'm happy with option E.
Okay, so let's move with option E. We'll get word on that relatively soon about the numbers, and if something has to tweak, we'll take it from there and have something ready. I think December 15th was kind of about the deadline when things needed to be ready. So, we should have this resolved by less than two weeks from now. Okay. Then we have one final item, which shouldn't take long, and that's the zoning text amendment 1216.
Right. The planning staff and I spent some time reviewing the implications of zoning text amendment 126 on the city of Tacoma Park. This zoning text amendment is before the county council right now, and it would remove the 5,000 square foot minimum lot air requirement for building a single-family home on lots that were established before 1928. We went through a fairly rigorous process on this for those properties in Tacoma Park. The first thing you should know is that the requirements of the zoning text amendment are that the setback standards would remain the same as they are in the current zoning ordinance for properties that were affected, I guess, in 1928. What that means is that for properties that are less than 3,000 square feet in area, there really isn't any space to build a building on it. So, we went through and identified the properties in Tacoma Park in single-family zones, and for this, we chose R-40 zones and R-60 zones, and went through the full list. One of the things that I think that is most important in terms of the findings is that of the 79 lots in the city of Tacoma Park that are in residential zones and that are between 3,000 square feet and 5,000 square feet in area, of those 79 lots, 76 already have single-family homes on them. So, clearly, these are buildable lots, they're part of our community, they're throughout the community, and I think there's nothing scary about them. We went through to identify vacant lots, to see if there were vacant lots in areas where if you built on them, it would cause some concern in the neighborhood about setting a different kind of size precedent if it would look out of place. We evaluated those, we didn't see any concern about that. About half of the lots are within the historic district in Tacoma Park and would have the added scrutiny of going through the subjective process with the historic district to make sure that it's appropriate homes. One of the things that you should know is that the R-40 zone is a zone that normally you could build a, an attached home on a 4,000 square foot lot. So, if you've got kind of a duplex, a side-by-side building with, on two lots with the lot line running down the center, you would have a 4,000 square foot lot on each side. But in the R-40 zone, if you want to build a single-family detached home, the current standards are that you have 6,000 square feet. We've got, you know, a mixture of those. We have, most of our single-family properties are, single-family zones are R-60, which generally applies a 6,000 square foot lot. But if you look, obviously, many of them are not that big. The, the county has been looking at single-family zones across the county in comparison, or, you know, considering this zoning text amendment, and they're also looking at R-90 zones. We do not have R-90 zones that have a 9,000 square foot area as a standard. I could see some concern in another community that might, might have large areas that have R-90 zones, that something that's less than 5,000 square feet wouldn't make sense. In Tacoma Park, these are regular lots. It, to us, it seemed that it makes sense to be able to continue to use them as regular building lots in the city of Tacoma Park. One of the things that was kind of interesting while we were evaluating this is, I don't know how many of you saw the recent Washington Post article on tiny houses as a whole new movement in environmental and kind of sustainable lifestyles that you use, that you get smaller... use, that you get smaller lots and you get smaller houses, and, and that's a good way to be. So there is some interest in having smaller, affordable, less environmentally consuming homes. When we looked at what kind of recommendations we would make on the zoning text amendment, our first, our first sense is that we should just stay out of this fight, it doesn't seem like it's, has a strong impact on Tacoma Park. I have come up with several potential comments, if you felt like you needed to make a comment on the zoning text amendment before the county council. You could say that in an R 40 or an R 60 zone, building homes on less than 5,000 square feet is appropriate if you maintain the setbacks, if the building's not contrary to a master plan vision for the neighborhood, and that the small property would not be a clear anomaly in the subdivision. Or you could say that the master plans should be evaluated in areas where there's a lot of these small lots. Or you could do something fairly, you could recommend something fairly strong, which is that only, you could only build on these lots by special exception. That would increase the price of the development, and, and therefore affect the affordability of the homes. So those are options that you could make, if you wish to make a comment on the county council's consideration of the zoning text amendment. Again, after we looked at this and evaluated, you've got maps, you've got a number of listings, we didn't feel that it was needed to go forward. I also do want to mention that a third of the city was zoned under Prince George's County zoning, and originally, people who have properties that are on these smaller lots, in, in the area that was Prince George's County, do have the rights to continue to build on those lots. So a third of our city kind of would be an exception to the zoning text amendment in any case. Can I answer any questions you have? Everybody's yawning here, so.
I did not yawn.
Councilmember Schultz.
What is the county's objective in proposing this ZTA?
I'm not sure. I know that there is a particular property, a particular property, a particular developer wants to develop something on, on a collection of small lots that he has. You know, it's, it's not a good idea in general to come up with a whole zoning text amendment to address one particular developer's interest.
Yeah, it's a, it's somebody who inherited a bunch of small lots and kind of job.
Nancy Florin tossing that person a bone. I guess Mike, I, I would lean toward us not testifying at all on this issue, but having head staff do the work, you've produced for us a map of these properties that are less than 5,000 square feet. I'd just like to see one refined map, which is the properties of less than 5,000 square feet, that don't have houses on them already. I think that's, if I'm understanding correctly, that, that narrower subset isn't there, and that's just for informational purposes.
Right, and I think there's, I know there's 3 of those in the historic district, although they're very small, and, and you couldn't build on them.
And you don't have to answer it now, but.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, we can, we can provide, we can provide that information. A number of them have some special topographical features that wouldn't allow development in any event.
And just, just a reminder that this came up, because I heard concerns expressed by, in particular, the town of Glen Echo and their mayor at a meeting of municipalities and councilmember Berliner's district, and thought, well, gee, you know, this may apply in Tacoma Park, wanted to see what the impact here was, to see if we had a reason to comment on this ZTA. The, the people in Cabin John have organized about this, the people in, Cabin John and Glen Echo, and Glen Echo is an incorporated town, Cabin John is not, and they're the ones who have put money into it, who have testified, who are fighting it, and I wanted to see if we had common issue with people in smaller municipalities who are covered by park and planning, since we're the, we're the 800-pound gorilla of municipalities under park and planning. And it appears that we don't have much impact, so if we testified at all, it would just be to say, you know, we don't, we, we looked at it, we don't see an impact in our community, but we feel that X is a principle that should be followed.
Can we just say that we think that in general, it's a stupid idea, but we don't really care?
No, we don't, because we have lots of old homes that are built on small lots, and it works out fine for us. It worked out fine.
I would agree that we shouldn't, we don't need to testify, we have enough issues to champion on our own.
I don't think we should testify.
Okay, well, then, it sounds like we have agreement. Thank you for the research, it provided some very interesting information, and helps us understand our community. So we have reached the end of our agenda items, and it's time to adjourn for our holiday recess, we'll see everybody in 2013.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
See you around the hood.
And I hope the Redskins lost.
Redskins are, Redskins are ahead.